Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission of the 25th of January 2012. At the beginning, if you will, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, never be destroyed.
Thank you all. I know while you're getting settled, we'll just get started with the other business of our meeting. The first of which is to make the TV coverage announcement and call roll. Mr. Vialobos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The special hearing of January 25th, 2012 will be televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV Channel 20, at 10:30 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of the special hearing will be on the evening of Friday, January 27th, 2012, immediately following the rebroadcast of the Monticello Planning Commission hearing on CSB-TV Channel 20.
And for the roll call?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Blau is absent today.
Thank you very much. This is the opportunity we have at each of our public meetings for the public to make comment on matters not on our agenda. We have two matters on the agenda today, but we have two speakers who have submitted speaker slips to speak on other matters. So we'll call on those individuals, and if there are any others among us who have public comment, general public comment, please submit a speaker slip to Commissioner Brown. The first of our public comment speakers is Donald Gallagher.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for all that you do, all the service you render to the community, and I really appreciate it. I'm here today to speak to the subject of two principal issues, a little bit of history as to what the two principal issues in the San Inez Valley are. One, Camp Four, Chumash Indians, and second, expansion of wine tasting sales, special events for wineries in the valley. As you probably know, many of the residents in the valley became very energized because of egregious violations by one particular valley, one particular winery. Two words, Roblar Winery. They continued to violate the conditions of their permit. Santa Barbara County Planning and Development was very much aware of this because neighbors began to complain, submitted all kinds of different violation notices. Once we realized the burden was on the neighborhoods to do this, we started to organize the neighborhood because Roblar Winery was, in fact, part of our neighborhood. Roblar has become before the commission in 2010, and I believe was upgraded by the commissioners for their violations, especially restaurant-serving businesses. There is no permit, none of the conditions of their conditional use permit indicated that they could do this type of thing. And yet, they continue to do it. They've done it again. Now, they were fined up to a total of $10,000 in year 2010 for multiple violations. Now, they've done it again in 2011. And there was a notice that was sent to the Planning and Development that the neighbors were outraged by this, and the response that we got from Planning and Development was that they were slapped on the wrist. This is hard to believe. This was a slap at the neighborhood. This was a slap at the planning commission. This was a slap at the supervisors laid down the rules and the requirements. Now, we have a manager here today, Ms. Black, who indicates, she's at the head, and she has to assume the responsibilities for these things. Maybe she can explain why. She is absolutely doing nothing with Roblar Winery after they have egregiously, once again, violated. They've changed managers, fired the other guy, now they're going to have a neighborhood-friendly type winery. That didn't happen. That did not happen. They've got another manager who's doing the same thing, obviously taking directions from their owner, who's an out-of-town guy who has no stake in the valley. He lives in Westlake Village. Well, it's a violation of what they've done of both the zoning and the development plan. It's a repeat violation with no penalty. They were given a warning by P&amp;D that they have 30 days to take, to make this thing right, to correct it. So then, in other words, if you interpret that correctly, they've got 30 days to continue doing what they're doing. This is an outrage. No penalty. P&amp;D is sending, I believe, the wrong message. They're essentially telling the wineries in the valley that they, once they get their permit, they can do pretty much whatever they wish. Despite what the planning commission's directions have been, despite what the rules and regulations set up by the county supervisors have been, they're taking it upon themselves now to simply go back to square one as though everything is okay. It's not.
Mr. Gallagher, I don't like to interrupt, but you have had more than three minutes?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. Well, let me, let me just finish this up, wrap this up real quickly. There is a sign law in Los Olivos, you've probably heard a lot about, probably been involved in that. An individual hangs a sign out in front of the sidewalk is going to be fined $625 for advertising that there's a restaurant there. The penalty for Roblar Winery, who's serving restaurant food, like services, is getting a warning. This is after egregious previous violations. Thank you.
Thank you. Always good to see you. Mr. Bob Field. And we have a third speaker, Mr. Poitras, I believe. We'll follow Mr. Field.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So this is kind of a follow-on to the same point about a lack of enforcement, same issue as wineries. The fundamental problem here is if you don't have enforcement, you don't have zoning. Another fundamental problem is it's the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors who set the rules in this county. You write the zoning, you write the development plans, you put conditions on things, and P&amp;D's, I think, egregious misbehavior here, they're taking over. They're, they are de facto making the rules in the county. So we got Roblar, repeat offender, illegal restaurant, no penalty. What's the message to the wine industry? Bridlewood, which was a very contentious issue in '98, long series of meetings in front of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, was given a very clear development plan, six events a year, you can't use that part of the property, you can't have more than one a month, no amplified music, repeat violations. We tried as neighbors to talk to them face-to-face, would you please just play by the rules? They denied they'd had any events, they denied they have weddings, just bull. So in frustration, we filed a complaint with the county. Six months later, the county has decided they are, in fact, in violation. Too many events relative to their development plan, events too frequently, events on parts of the property that are strictly prohibited, amplified music, and here's the penalty. For too many events, $100. For events too frequently, $100. Events on parts of the property that are prohibited, $25. Amplified music, $25. Parking tickets cost more than that. The message to the neighborhood is, we understand how concerned you are, we've got over 300 signatures from you guys. We don't seem to care. The message to the wine industry is, just do it. You got get-out-of-jail-free cards from P&amp;D, $25. Just do it. The message to you and to the Board of Supervisors is, they don't really care about what you do either. You can sit here, and I pity this audience who's got to listen to you try to, try to limit developments and put conditions on things, it doesn't matter. Diane Black and North County Development Review will just allow whatever through selective enforcement. You got a very big problem here. This is the public's business. Political power comes from the public, and it is implemented through elected officials who are accountable to the public. It does not come from the bureaucratic career people, and that's where it's coming from in Santa Barbara County. And that's not the way it works in this country. This is America, not South America.
Thank you. Mr. Poitras.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you all for service to our county. I'm John Poitras. I live around the corner from Bridlewood Winery. Not too long ago, we were very surprised to see balloons flying in the air and helicopters doing maneuvers, and we found out that somehow, while they were under a formal zoning complaint by P&amp;D, that they were approved to do a commercial filming with a stunt helicopter right next to a neighborhood with prize horses that were panicking to the noise. Not only that, the helicopter was in violation of Federal Aviation Regulation 91.119. I'm a pilot. If I had done what he did, I would have lost my license forever. He flew at less than 100 feet with two witnesses, and he'd put everybody on the ground in danger. Now, this is just an example of what this county department, Planning and Development, is doing without anybody's knowledge. They're putting us all in danger. They're putting drinking drivers down the road, they're rubber stamping every wine tasting room that comes along, and now they're approving stunt flying in our neighborhoods. I submit that in any corporation which I've been involved in for decades, the chief people in this department would have been fired, their pensions would have been denied for I don't know what this county's going to do about it, but unless this county has an unlimited liability policy, it needs to stop this now. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to address the commission today on the matters not on the agenda? Okay, we have no other speaker slips. So that would conclude the public comment. Obviously, Ms. Black, there were comments made of concern to you, and I don't know if you would like to take an opportunity to say anything today, but perhaps at some point, we ought to place the general matter of enforcement, particularly in the San Inez Valley, as to wineries and special events for further discussion by the commission.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, that was fairly personal, so I don't think I'm going to respond today. What I'd suggest is that we come back and brief the commission on our enforcement tools, responsibilities, abilities and limitations, because I think if the public understood that, they may understand a bit more as to why we took the actions that we took. Unfortunately, I think most of the people who testified have left. So I will find an upcoming agenda, probably not until March, because your agendas are pretty full, to do that, and if the commission would like to talk to me about this issue individually, I'm happy to do that as well.
I do have one question. The suggestion was made, it seems incredible to me, incredible meaning unbelievable, that the P&amp;D permitted stunt flying. Can you put that to rest today?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we did issue a permit for an aerial filming through the film commissioner's office. We issued that permit without an understanding of the limitations at Roblar. We certainly didn't authorize the pilot or the crew to do anything that was contrary to the FAA. I don't think they told us what level they were going to be flying at. They simply said they were going to be filming a commercial from the air. So it's true that we did issue a film permit. It's a permit that, in retrospect, I would not have issued on that property without some investigation as to the limitations on the property's CUP, and we've corrected our procedures on that internally. And obviously, we cannot authorize, even if we tried authorize somebody to do something that's counter to FAA regulations.
And presents a public safety hazard?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments by commissioners at this point? Do you agree this is something we'd like to hear from staff from eventually? Okay. Great. So that brings us to the first item on our agenda, item C1. Mr. Vialobos, could you read that into the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Community Services Department to consider case number 12GOV-2, application filed on January 17, 2012, for determination that the proposed acquisition of the Bridge House Shelter for the purpose of continuing shelter services is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
Thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Commissioner Valencia indicated that he has a motion with regard to this matter.
Mr. Chair, I move that we take this off the consent calendar. I'd like to discuss a couple of items with, with respect to this particular project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Now, we're at a full hearing. Did you want to make any site visit or other ex parte declarations with regard to this project?
I did make a site visit, and I've gone through the project, driven around the area, but most of all is because of the history of what has happened to this project. The Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation had this project for several years, and under the last couple of years, it's come under fire because it would not produce certain documents to the city of Lompoc, and I don't know if to the county concerning the financial status of their operation. It comes now that they're wanting to pull out of this particular project, and my concern is that if the county's going to take this on, I have three questions. One, will there be an expense to the county because of the failed condition of the project at this point? And I'll ask the three questions so that you can, and then can we have an expense operational cost list for the last three years? And third, was there any dollars lost from the county because of this failure? This, this operation is typical of many nonprofits where they're trying to help the poor, they're trying to help the people that don't have a place to sleep, and it's all very, but the executive director makes $100,000 a year. That gives me a little bit of heartburn sometimes when we have salaries at that position, and then there's a failure, not that they make that money, but that there's a failure and there has not been any revelation of that the failure was coming. One day, they just said to the people, the doors are going to be closed tomorrow or within two days, and that's it. The people didn't have any place to go. So with that, Mr. Chair, I go back to you that perhaps the county can respond to that.
I do want to refer to staff, but would just point out at the outset that the scope of our review of this item is relatively narrow. It's, it's a consistency determination, but in terms of background and the concern of the community, it would be helpful, I think, to get some from staff, and I'm not sure if Ms. Carmichael is available, but perhaps you can help, Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Commissioner Valencia, I don't think those are questions that either Dana Carmichael or I could answer, but I know Sharon Friedrichsen is here today, and she may be able to address some of the concerns of the commission. Ron Carlantini with Real Property is also here. He may have a little bit more information about that. I, I would point out that I believe the Board of Supervisors is going to be taking this matter up at their next regular agenda on February 6th.
It was 7th.
February 7th, and I believe that these issues will certainly be discussed at the Board of Supervisors, and that's probably the best venue for them, but we'll, we'll try and provide you the information we can today. So if Sharon or Ron can come forward, that would be helpful.
All right. If there's any input that Mr. Carlantini can bring forward, I'd sure like to hear it, just a short, I don't expect you to give me the history of everything that's transpired, but perhaps a short synopsis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. Ron Carlantini, General Services Department, and I'm working with our new department, Community Services, and specifically the Housing Division, to move forward with this proposed transfer of property mainly on the financial obligations the county has set forth for that property. So to specifically answer the expense of that activity, as well as the operational costs that have been gone, gone on annually, we don't probably have those, those firm numbers. What we do know from the real, real estate side is we have some existing recorded deeds of trust, and the county has an investment there. One of the deeds of trust was a CDBG grant, and another one was a state grant. So what we're doing is we're assuring that that money will stay on the property so that the continuation of the homeless shelter will continue, which Sharon can address through the Housing Department. But on the real estate side, we have done a number of due diligence issues to, to keep us aware of the condition of the property. We've done an environmental site assessment, we've done an appraisal, we've done home inspection with regards to the structures. We're doing this step here. If the board does choose to move forward with the transfer, this, this item here is a requirement under our due diligence, and we'll perform sequel on it. So on the real estate side, I can't really answer your two questions with regards to the expense and the operational costs, but at this point, probably the, the primary reason why we're, the board would consider this transfer is so that no money is lost that has been invested for this community service of, of housing the homeless. If you want to add something?
I don't think it goes quite that low.
Okay, sorry. Planning Commission, as Diane Black did mention, we are doing due diligence with the Planning Commission today to take this item to the Board of Supervisors. That's tentative for February 7th. The board would then consider the potential acquisition of Bridge House Shelter. At this point in time, the county has a request for proposals in place. We are actually trying to garner interest from nonprofit organizations in order to operate the shelter. So we do have federal funds specifically for the operations of emergency shelters put in place for this facility. We also have local funds put in place for general fund dollars for emergency shelter contract also for this facility. So we do have funding in place that's already been set aside, and right now, again, as part of our due diligence, doing a request for proposals to see what kind of budget a potential new provider could submit to the county and let us know how much it might be to operate the Bridge House Shelter. We've had received budgets in the past from the previous provider as part of competitive funding processes, but again, we've have a certain budget set aside and want to see what kind of proposals providers can give to us to work within our budget, and that would be part of the board's consideration as well. If that answers your question, or if you need me to elaborate, just let me know.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Commissioner Valencia, thank you. We know that you're proposing to do good things in the future so that this doesn't happen again, but I'm concerned that maybe some of the practices that happened, not too far distant, perhaps something is, is not right. There are a lot of good-meaning people that serve on these boards, and some of these people have resigned, and there's a reason for that, and I want to make sure that the Board of Supervisors gets the entire story, which we in the community have not been able to get. We have had an investigative reporter who has been asking questions, asked to speak to the attorney, has been denied access, has been denied information to print in the paper, so want to make sure that the board receives everything possible that it can, that nothing is hidden back before they make a decision. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I had a real estate question, getting back to our responsibility, Mr. Carlantini.
Mr. Chair.
And, and I don't mean to indicate this isn't important to the community, but, but since we're, the matter's before us to approve the suggestion that this is consistent with the general plan, it appears to depend on the existence and validity of a conditional use permit. So as part of your due diligence, you, you looked at that permit and the, the activities planned by the county would be consistent with that?
Mr. Chair, I personally have not looked at the land use permit or any of the land use issues that may arise. It was my understanding through housing that the continuation of, of a similar program would continue without a change of use. If a new vendor comes on board through housing, I'm sure those issues would be addressed so that compliance would, would occur.
But for purposes of our motion, we should assume that the use that has been made pursuant to the conditional use permit would continue?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so any motion we make would be dependent on that. Any other questions from commissioners on this item? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Maybe more of a statement than a question, but I, I did look at the language of the CUP, and it said it is an emergency shelter for up to 40 residents, and then a second-stage homeless facility for up to 16 residents. You know, I, I look, I think our entire community that live in the Lompoc Valley, you know, we do look forward to a very speedy resolution. This has been very disturbing, as Commissioner Valencia has said, and the public, maybe when it goes before the board, you know, some of this information might be discussed a little bit more openly. I'm hoping that when these RFPs go out, you know, when the county does, you know, sign, you know, the operation of the facility, that it is used, you know, according to the CUP. I think it's been underutilized myself. There is a somewhat of a danger factor where it is with the people leaving at 8 o'clock in the morning or 7:00 and having to be back at a certain time, and I was always under the impression that it was closed during the day. But I'm looking at the CUP thinking, well, maybe, you know, it could be used more completely, you know, as a daytime facility also. So I had talked to staff yesterday, wondering about this, and I'm, I'm ready to move ahead with it as a consent, well, it's not a consent item, but, you know, to move ahead with the staff recommendation.
Would you make that motion, then?
Then I move the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Valencia, seconds.
Mr. Chair, did you ask if there were public comments?
No, I don't believe I did. Is there anyone to comment on this from the public? We don't have any notes. All right, so we're ready to move forward with the discussion on the motion. Is there any? Right, then let's call the roll. Mr. Vialobos.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, very good. We will move forward with item number one on our agenda, the Park Hill Estates application in five minutes. On the record, this is the special meeting of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission of January 25, 2012, and we are ready to have item number one read into the agenda. Mr. Vialobos. Mr. Vialobos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Jeff Nelson to consider case number 10TRM1, application filed on May 4, 2010, and to adopt the negative declaration 11NGD13 pursuant to state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Fellow Commissioners, any expertise that hasn't been previously disclosed? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the only additional expertise is that I may have received some emails which were forwarded to you, forwarded to the rest of the commission, but no further expertise than that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks is next.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I spent about a half an hour doing what I consider more thorough site visit than I had done previously. I was up there this morning, and I drove all around the project site, and I was very happy that I did that.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is a declaration that I made about seven or eight years ago when the project first came on. I want to make it again. I served with Charlotte Zelik on the Civil Service Commission for about a period of five years until she passed on, and then I also knew Lou, her husband, met him on several occasions and talked to him on several occasions about this particular project when it first came in, on the 12-lot development project, and so had several conversations with him before he passed on. So I just want to make sure that that was on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. I did have one telephone call from a neighbor of this project, Chris O'Connor, an individual whom I know, and did not have a chance to share his comments with the rest of the commission, but there was nothing new in that conversation that hasn't already been discussed in this project. Good morning, Ms. McCurdy, you're going to be with us today.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to be here.
And we're happy you're here, and Ms. Almy, as always, and Ms. Mooney, good to see you. So I think we're ready to go. Back to you, Mr. Tuttle.
Mr. Chair, if I could just do a brief recap of the status of this item, just to remind everyone that we did have a first hearing on this item on December 5th. We had a presentation from staff, the applicant made a presentation, and your commission also heard from many concerned neighbors. We didn't get to the neighbor's consultant, Mr. Magny, and we also didn't have the staff biologist testify at the hearing on the 5th, but they are both available today. Mr., I don't believe Mr. Tuttle has a presentation, he has available the slides from the presentation he made to your commission on the 5th.
Okay, that's great. Although we don't want to suggest this is the last opportunity, I would offer the applicant the opportunity to make an introduction and bring forth any kind of expert testimony that they would like initially as opposed to unrebuttal. Mr. Nelson, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Cooney and members of the commission. We wanted to go through a few slides, including some new pictures that neighbors requested some pictures to show you what the west end of the property is, and also Commissioner Valencia wasn't here, so we wanted to go over just a couple of slides that are reminder slides of our first presentation, which has been some six weeks now. Will this advance it, Alex? Do you think? Or is... Follow-up items, we principally want to deal with Lot 10 Planning, which is the northwest lot that is near the Sheldons and bio and grassland mitigation, which the expert, various experts have weighed in on. First, here is the map with the various lots, and here's Lot 10, which is in the northwest corner. Here's Lot 11. Those were the Lot 10 principally is the area that was in question before, and the Sheldons live over here. Here's the artist's rendition of the maximum home sizes in neighborhood. Here's a little closer. You can see that it's, the density of 1.1 units per acre is consistent with the neighborhood that has a variety of different densities close to one acre and less. The slopes on adjacent homes, the whole property around here tips from the mountains towards the ocean, so there's inherently slopes and issues that relate right to the adjacent properties. So if you look towards the mountains, the properties across Pinell are upgrade and are higher than the Park Hill property. Most of those are two-story homes and tend to be 20 feet or so higher than the Park Hill property. Once you get out to Lot 10 on the northwest end, you see that landscaping really dominates the issue of what, the visibility issue. So this eucalyptus tree is on the Jete property, which is directly north and towards the mountains from Lot 10, and so the homes back here, that is the predominant issue as far as views as opposed to a building that would be placed on this site. And this is actually where the plan is, the building is to be. When you go down to Lot 11, which is the southwest corner, the lot is at grade except for a little corner that is leveled out at 340 or 341, and the west view is completely dominated by existing vegetation, so that provides the screening. The Sheldon's property is indeed lower than Lot 10, and this is from about, elevation of about 335. The lot would be about five feet higher than this. So the way we laid out the lots at the outset was to have them accommodate courtyard homes that would be set back closer to the cul-de-sac here, which is the same as in 2007, and be able to be tucked closer to the cul-de-sac. So here's an example of a one-story home, the back courtyard area that would be, which we had in mind in creating these lots. Here's the 2007 plan where there were, here's the Sheldon's home, once again, there were three lots that touched this western end. The drainage, the site plan was done to meet all county standards in terms of drainage, et cetera, and so one of them, here is the drainage beforehand where all of this water goes to the west. The Flowers and Associates Plan responds to the county directive to control that drainage as much as possible, and so only this amount would float to the west, and the rest would be directed back to the retention basin. Here are the pads on Lot 10 and 11 with there being tapered two-to-one lots up to the pads here. This is the Flowers and Associates, actually, second iteration of those lots. Key issues was, in 2007, the plan had the same pad heights on that western end, 340, with gravity sewer flow. EHS has said we must keep gravity flow. The two main building masses are about 275 feet away from each other, almost a full football field. This is a private view issue. Hedging is the solution. We have discussed a win-win situation where the Sheldon's would get area added to their yard via a landscape easement and common controlled hedging landscaping along that area. The Flowers map had to meet county standards upon being submitted and reviewed by the subdivision committee, and it does. The house in this Lot 10 will be one-story. We'd like a 22-foot building height. Very low building heights are characteristic of old tract homes and mobile homes with no architectural character. We have interest in creating visual shielding, too, between this Lot 10 house and the house below it. Acceptable conditions for us on this is hedging, the county will recognize and allow that hedging is allowed in the lower yard. Building heights limited to 18 feet within 20 feet of the outer edge of the building pad, and our, the house we showed you before tapers back like that also. And pads, as far as we're concerned, pads can be reduced three and a half feet to 36.5 elevation. If it's, if there's no more process involved, delays or regulatory problems, including EHS, who has before said sewer pumping, which is required at that level, was not acceptable. If they say it is acceptable, then we're okay with dropping that lot. Once again, here is, here is that Lot 7 before, oops, I'm sorry. Hit the wrong button. Okay, this is the artistic impression, and once again, here's lots 10 and 11, that's the issue of controversy, and here is the retention basin to which the water is directed to flow. The public view issue is predominantly is clearing an ocean view that is now obscured along the road here. Here is that, here is San Antonio Creek Road that has a number of pepper trees, and part of the plan is to eliminate those and have low vegetation so that as you're driving down the street, you can indeed see the ocean, which is a legitimate public view issue. Grasslands, the big issue in this 2011, 2012 project is that the grasslands increase such that mitigation was required to go from 2.7 acres to 6.1 acres, and there's not really room on the site for 6.1-point acres. Our one-to-one replacement request was denied under bonus density request. This isolated spot in the existing neighborhood is a biological sink, according to our biologist, where anything that, if indeed the planting was in the retention basins, that anything that went there would be subject to cats and dogs preying on it. This is an isolated urban plant preserve that was created in 2007 that we think is not nearly as good as the UCSB coastal location, which is adjacent to over 150 acres of restored open space. The out-of-town biologist hired by some neighbors is also trying to disrupt the approval of preserve at San Marcos. Ironically, the county denied us the right to do off-site mitigation for Park Hill at the county's land at the preserve at San Marcos. Mark Delagarza spoke to you before. He's been studying the property since 99, and he's written to you that he's done many done studies over the years, all approved by the county. Lisa Stratton talked to you last time about the off-site restoration plan for the West Campus Bluffs, which is out near the ocean, near public trails, and in fact, they took some sample plants from Park Hill already and planted them there. As to the access through Tucker's Grove, it's only a third of a mile from this property down lower San Antonio Creek through Tucker's Grove, which was open until 1974, then the county decided to close it. One could actually, it's only a third of a mile, if worse came to worse, it would be the quickest way out on foot or by bike if somehow vehicles were not even available. People are driving through that every week, about 10 people are going through it a day even though they're not supposed to, and I've been driving it periodically just to confirm that it exists, and you can drive through it right now. These are plastic bollards that a car just drives through, and then you come down and move these signs. So it's an area-wide issue that's a concern for our people, too, but it's not the product of anything that our project has done. Before, we used a compromise plan that reduced the market homes from 17 to 15 from filed a year and a half ago, shifted the affordable inside the project as suggested by neighbors, increased site yard setbacks, doubling from the zoning requirement, replanned and reoriented every single lot along the way, reduced some more building heights, clarified with parks and fire that Tucker's Grove is definitely available for emergency access. All changes of these were made after the petitions against the project and in favor of the 2007 project were signed more than a year ago. As to fine-tuning conditions, we remind you that we had two requests that construction start at 7:30 as allowed in other projects, and the affordable unit be built after 10 market homes have been built rather than eight. In summary, the owners, the Zeliks and the Kones, have waited 40 years so far. It's time. We are backed by state laws that support infill development that were done both to promote responsible planning and in response to NIMBYs statewide. We have dropped lots and changed every single lot in response to neighbors' input. Over 350 hours of staff time has gone into this recommended approval and mitigated NND, plus hundreds of hours in earlier reviews going back to 1997. This is about four additional homes above the 2007 plan, and the most logical way to address the county's affordable housing requirement, which is otherwise paying $1.2 million in lieu fees, and fashioning an outstanding solution for the grasslands that provides a real public benefit. We request approval today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Commissioner Valencia has a question.
Mr. Sir.
Mr. Chair, would this be the time to ask about the affordable housing, or would you rather I wait till later on?
Well, you want to ask the applicant, or do you want to ask staff? Yeah, sure, by all means.
Mr. Nelson, I have a question concerning Lot Number 3. That's the affordable lot.
Yes.
You know, in the past, when small lots like this have been placed in some projects, we find that this is a very expensive, these people are going to have gardeners and what have you. The person who buys this lot, I suspect, in order to qualify for an affordable lot, will not be able to afford a gardener to the degree that the other neighbors will, and this lot might end up being a blemish on that project. Could you assure me that these things won't happen?
Yes. First off, it'll be a rental, which is an important starting point, because if in fact it's a sale, then you lose control over the aesthetics of the lot. And so we've said to the neighbors from the very first day, we're going to control this as a rental. Therefore, the landlord has the ultimate responsibility, the owner, the developer has the responsibility for maintaining it, and if, and so that's where you, it's not in the hands of the tenant to control the landscaping. And it's absolutely in the developer's interest to have it, not a bad-looking lot. So we will control the landscaping.
And what's to preclude him from not selling it? Will it be a condition of approval, or?
Well, it's, our, the project starts with a project description. Our project description is that this is an affordable rental, and so if it was not, if it was a for-sale unit, then we'd have to change our project description.
And thank you very much for that, Ms. McMullin. If I may, Mr. Chair, is that the case, that there would be absolute control of this lot
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the requirement for the rental unit is that it be price-restricted for a period of 30 years. That's the state density bonus provisions. After that 30 years, it would no longer be subject to those restrictions on price, and so it could, at that point, become a for-sale unit after 30 years, or it could become just a market rate rental.
I see. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I don't see any other, oh, I'm sorry, a question from Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, just to follow on Mr. Tuttle, that's a rolling 30-year period, is it not? It's not a, in other words, if somebody's, oh, for a rental, I guess it is a 30-year period. Okay, yeah. Mr. Nelson, on the lot on 10, could you put up one of your diagrams? I'm not sure which one you didn't give us. Okay. Is there, let's see, currently that house now is... Is there any reason why the house couldn't be, whatever the configuration, because this is just sort of a placeholder, this is not really the floor plan, is that correct?
Correct.
That the house could be at a lower level, perhaps stepped down so that the, the height at, from the rear could be 18 feet or perhaps we can make it the height 18 for the entire house?
It is true. Our preference is, and I, and I said in my condition, that we're okay with the end of the lot being, the final 20 feet being at 18 feet. But I would prefer for long-term livability that the lot itself not step down. I mean, either, I think we should either have the lot lowered by three and a half feet, which we have offered if EHS approves it. If, if you stepped down the house and you have a bathroom at the end of the house, which is likely, then you, you have the same issue of having to pump the sewer.
Well, I don't understand why you couldn't design a house there that didn't have, didn't have to do pumping.
Well, you'd have to front-load all the bathrooms then if you stepped down the lot. That's, that's the issue. I mean, the issue of pumping is there has to be, pumping is whether there is, there is sufficient gravity between the lot and the sewer connection. And so as you get farther out there, if that stepped down, then you would not, you'd have to have pumping. And I would prefer to have the whole lot reduced in, rather than some artificial constraint that essentially you can't have bathrooms in the back end of the house. But we're completely okay with having the outer edges of, of the house be 18 feet. This can be 22 feet. And that's what our suggestion was, that would be okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes. Looking at the plan in front of us right now, could you just show me exactly where there would be allowed on-street parking and where it wouldn't be allowed? And I'm.
Yes. Okay, that's a good question. These, this road is 24 feet, no parking. This is wider, this is 32 feet so that there is guest parking there. This is 24 feet, no parking. This is 30, it was originally going to be 32 feet, but is reduced down to 28 feet, which the county says now you can have parking on one side. So what, where you will be able to have parking is on this side in areas that are kind of limited by, inherently by the driveway cut-ins. So you would have in, in front of that house, in front of that house, in front of that house, et cetera. And you, on private roads like this, you have CCNR restrictions about no oversized vehicles or long-term parking, et cetera, so that you can control the, can control the nature of the parking specifically through the CCNRs. But actually, in watching the tapes in 2007, one of the commissioners said, you've got to make sure that you do indeed have some onsite parking here so that if people have a party, that you, you can have some parking. And then we've experienced that in our projects also, that you need to have some because there are, the San Marcos volleyball team meets for a party here. And, and so that's, there are times when you have need for some street parking that will not be accommodated by the driveways.
Okay. I asked that question only during my site visit today. I saw very little street parking, you know, in the surrounding areas.
Right.
And, okay, we'll work on that today maybe. Thank you.
Right.
Commissioner Valencia? Thank you, Mr. Chair. And is there going to be some, how many parking spaces are you going to allow here?
I'm trying to remember how many that would allow. This, that's actually a fair amount of distance. That's probably six cars or so. That's just a guess, though.
Okay. That'll be open to the public?
That'll be, these are private roads that are for the use and paid for by these residents.
Oh, all right.
So, and this, this is a private lot that is owned by the development also.
Mr. Nelson, you mentioned this emergency access down San Antonio Creek Road and that you drive it on a regular basis just to see that it's open and operating. The mitigated negative declaration also refers to it as possibly egress from natural disasters and fires and so forth. Is it part of what you're relying on to address the issue of, of public safety for fire evacuation or not?
Well, the issue of adequacy of fire access and emergency is something that's an area-wide concern. We start by going to the subdivision committee and each department imposes their conditions. And so we don't control that, that road as, it's been closed since the, the Zelex and Coens who still own the property, it was closed in six years after they bought the property. So it's an area-wide issue that we don't control. And it's, and so as far as the planning of this project has been concerned, what the issue that the fire department always imposed is, we want two roads here, even though that's below the 30 threshold that requires two points of access in here. They said we want, they said back in 1997, we want two roads here. And then the rest of it is really an area-wide issue. Whether you had four homes or 10 homes, it's, it's an area-wide issue as far as we're concerned. And we don't, we don't control that road. I mean, in, in theory, the county could go back and open up the road to Tucker's Grove or they could do something else. They in fact made it more accessible since 2007, but it's, to us, it's an area-wide issue as opposed to a project-specific issue.
I agree with you about that. But your statement that whether it's four or 10 is relevant, it seems to me, because each additional home introduces two, three, four cars into the picture. My experience with fire evacuation is that people like to get their cars out of the area if they have time to do that. So you've got numerous trips when it counts the most. And so it may be an area-wide problem, but I do think the larger the subdivision, the more serious the impact of, of your particular project.
Well, let me say one thing that we, we did to address this, because we started by listening to the 2007 hearing tapes and listened to every comment made by everyone at that time. And one of the comments is the biggest problem at that time is if there are horses. If people are evacuating horses, that's a real problem. And so we designed these lots so, and we did this at Vintage Ranch too, so they, they would not lend themselves for anyone to have horses nor to have second units. So the more, the more second units you have, then the more, those are the same number of people fleeing as you have the primary residents. So we designed these so that they would not, we'd have building pads that would not accommodate horses or second units so that we would know how many people are going to be here max. And, and I think we have done that successfully. And so anyway, that, to, to that extent, we, we were cognizant of that issue.
No, I'm not suggesting you haven't paid attention to it.
Yes.
And there is a lot about the project that addresses these issues. But my point was each additional home, I don't care if it's one new home, aggravates the concern of the entire neighborhood with regard to that crucial moment when you're packing up and trying to get out.
Understood. And one, one other issue that I think is material to that, that moment that is that right now, this is 15 acres of, in the peak of summer, late September, August, tinder-dry grass, even though it's been mowed in April. And there's, there's a fire here, shows on one of the maps, with Mr. Vickers testified there was like 200-foot flames. And this is not a safe condition as it is right now. And, and these, you have super-fire-safe building codes right now. And all of this will be safer in terms of burning embers flying around in a time of fire than if it was, as it's been sitting there, tinder-drying grass that's about six inches high at that time of the year.
Okay. I don't see any current questions, but I'm sure you'll have a chance to come back later.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Tuttle.
May I just wanted to point out that we do have Captain Dwight Peppin from County Fire present today to address the issue of emergency access and fire issues. So if you have questions, he can, he'll be here to respond to those.
Great. You know, I do want to get to public comment, but, but I certainly would invite Captain Peppin to come up if he would like to address these issues now. And then listen to public comment and add anything later that might be relevant.
Good morning. Good morning. Chair Cooney, member of the commission. Maybe just to stay consistent with access that we're working on in different projects with you, we'll start kind of with the basics here. This project has less than 30 homes, which for our standards and the fire code only requires one access point. They've come, you know, forward with two, which is outstanding on our behalf, and we really support that. So that's for the project itself. But then when you go to the neighborhood, it also has two acceptable access points for the fire department. And one is San Antonio Creek Road, which goes to the north. And then Villalos Santos to San Marcos Road down to Cathedral Oaks would be the second one. You brought up the alternate access point that goes down through the park. Very recently, I know the deputy chief and the fire marshal have been down in there. And I know they've had some conversations beginning with the park of what possibly could be improved down there. I'm not really sure how that all was, came about and was developed, but it, it doesn't meet the requirements of the fire department. And I think it's just kind of grown there. I was there, I've been there a couple of times within the last week, including this morning. And it's really a one-way road. And during an emergency, if someone was to be leaving the area and trying to get down to the park and anything happened to make that congested, it's a horrible place for people to be trapped. And the fire marshal wanted me to pass on the same information. That was his opinion also, that there needs to be some improvement maybe in the future, which really isn't related to this. And we don't have the authority to direct that with this project, but that's not a good escape route. Although it's there and it's been used, it just has a lot of potential for danger.
With regard, and I'm very appreciative of you coming because these, these issues give me great concern. And I understand that the project is doing what it can to mitigate the new homes being built within that area. But it, it doesn't seem to me that it's, it's making things better for the neighborhood than they are right now. Now, maybe the grass is too long at certain times of the year. So while the neighborhood generally, you've indicated, has acceptable, two acceptable means of escaping without considering this, this park emergency access, it's my conclusion, I have to say, that we can't pay attention to that particular route as addressing the concern with fire safety. And I think that's what you're saying, is that basically if you had an emergency situation, a one-way road in bad condition, perhaps even subjecting would be escaping to a greater danger if the fire were to jump down into the park. It seems to me we really ought to wipe that off as, as in any way addressing the serious problem we have. Do you agree?
Chair Cooney, I do agree. And that was the same feeling from the fire marshal when I talked to him this morning. You know, even the signage on there is contradicting all the way down. And before, someone mentioned that the front gates at the park are crash gates, but there's no instructions or anything on those gates that, you know, if you didn't know or just weren't going to ram it on your own to get out of there in emergency. So it, it's really nothing that we feel is an advantage at all for this project as far as an access.
And could be a disadvantage in dire circumstances.
The way it is today, yes.
Anything further that you'd like us to be aware of with regard to fire safety?
I believe, you know, that provided everything along with our, you know, standards for the, the project and that it does meet. And I do understand, you know, you're adding more homes to an already, you know, neighborhood that's already seen a lot of evacuations and emergencies and the congestion that goes with that. But I don't think I have anything other to answer to that.
Could I ask one question? The project is situated among a fairly well-developed number of residential units. But if we were to draw back and had a photo of the greater area, the, the Los Padres National Forest is north of this project, above it and above San Marcos Pass Road. Is that right?
Chair Cooney, yes, it is.
And what is, what is your experience, what is the fire department's experience with the direction a fire would travel if it was burning in the Los Padres National Forest? Can you generalize? Perhaps not. But if, if it's a wildland fire like we have seen in this area in the past, what has been the direction of the fire movement?
Chair Cooney, we unfortunately have the history of the paint fire, which, you know, blew from the forest right down through there. We have the common sundowner winds, San Ana winds blow through there. And I believe as I listened to the neighborhood at our last meeting, you know, they all talked about having one access or egress point during an emergency. And, you know, that's based on all the fires that have been to the north of them, which basically cut off the route to the north from Camino San Carlos or San Antonio Road. So, you know, the history shows it comes from the mountains down.
And that's exactly my concern, is that really we're talking about one real access point and everybody's using it in that neighborhood in, in terms of escaping an oncoming fire.
Chair Cooney, you're correct for the wildland fires, but for the fire service, we also have to think of other types of emergencies that could happen to the south where the only access or egress would be up through the north also. We've only had fires that have really affected that, but there's certainly other emergencies that could come up. And that just enforces the importance of two access points.
Oh, thank you very much. Any, any other questions for our fire captain? Don't see any. You may want to stay around if you have time. And I know that we'll discuss this issue as the hearing goes along. All right. As Ms. McCurdy pointed out, we did not have As Ms. McCurdy pointed out, we did not have a chance for the neighborhood to present the testimony of David Magny, although we had a written report from him. So I want to be sure he has the opportunity to testify today. There's been a request that he have up to 15 minutes. I hope it doesn't take that long, but why don't we hear from Mr. Magny, get questions from the commissioners, and Ms. Mooney may chime in on the issues presented. And then we'll go directly to comments from the members of the general public. Mr. Magny.
Commissioner Cooney, councilmember, uh, Commissioner members, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. Basically, the comments that I'm going to provide to you have been submitted in writing this morning as well, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to hear my points and be available for, of course, any questions you have. Today, I'm going to focus on the adequacy and of using a mitigated negative declaration for this project based on what we know about the project biological resources, or rather, what we don't know. I'm here representing the San Antonio Creek Association. I am a qualified biologist in this county as well as several others. And I have, in fact, written the biological resource section for the previous Bridle Ridge EIR on behalf of the county many years ago. Evaluation of the project site resources, I want to focus on the environmental thresholds guidelines manual. On page 36, it says that a resource inventory must be conducted to determine if the site supports resident species or migratory species, and whether any special status species are present. It also requires a determination of the site resource conditions and quality, and how biologically productive it is, and what its viability, what is its viability. No systematic surveys of the project have ever been conducted to determine baseline conditions according to published survey protocols for vascular plants or wildlife. A botanical inventory was conducted in March 1998, and supplemental observations during surveys focused on vegetation mapping were conducted in April 2011 and August and October of 2010. Wildlife surveys were only conducted for vertebrate surveys in the late fall-spring of 1998. No surveys were ever conducted for non-vascular plants or invertebrates. There's a whole section of biological resources have never been examined, and it's been a significant amount of time since they have been surveyed for, nearly 14 years, in fact. The criteria used to determine habitat, condition, quality were not provided. And claims are made, or at least indirectly, that grassland habitats not dominated by native grasses, grass species, have little value and are not considered valuable as important habitat. No criteria have been provided as to how the biologists that have assessed the park, Hill Estates project site, determine the significance of the grasslands on-site that are not dominated by native plant species. SEQA requires substantial evidence be provided to support conclusions about biological resources present at the project site, and how a proposed project would directly or indirectly impact the biological resources. Below are quotes from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, with focusing on technical advice series on mitigation of negative declarations. And I put that into my comment letter. I'm not going to read all of those, but
Thank you.
Specific parts of it to emphasize my position. SEQA requires that the lead agency, through its initial study, review the whole of a project. The decision to repair a mitigated negative declaration must be grounded on an objective, good-faith effort on the part of the lead agency to review project's potential for significant impacts. The original determination made on the basis of the initial study, whether to repair either a MND or an EIR, is subject to the fair argument test. In other words, if a fair argument can be raised on the basis of substantial evidence in the record that the project may have a significant adverse environmental impact, even if evidence also exists to the contrary, then requires an EIR be prepared and submitted. A negative declaration is authorized when the lead agency determines that no substantial evidence exists supporting a fair argument of significant effect. A mitigated negdeck applies when changes to the project or other mitigation measures are imposed, that such all potential significant effects are avoided or reduced to a level of insignificance. Pursuant to Section 21080, substantial evidence includes facts, reasonable assumptions predicted upon facts, predicated upon facts, and expert opinion supported by facts. Facts, facts, that's very important. It does not include arguments, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, evidence in which clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence of social or economic impacts that do not contribute to or are not caused by physical impacts to the environment. And controversy is not, could be considered as this as well. Then there are two prerequisites in using a mitigated negdeck. All, one is all potentially significant impacts of the project can and will be avoided or mitigated to a level of insignificance by project revisions or other requirements imposed on the project. A mitigated negdeck is based on the premise that the project will not result in a significant effect. Two, the project changes in mitigation measures must be agreed on to or made by the proponent before the negdeck is circulated to the public and reviewed. Now, there are some allowance for mitigation applied to the project, but it becomes part of the project, they must be enforceable. A key question of the lead agency is what level of mitigation project is sufficient to avoid or eliminate the potential significant effect? That is sometimes difficult to understand or get a hold of, but there must be evidence in the record as a whole to support that conclusion. Then there's the Section 15370, which lists the order in which impacts are to be considered. One is avoid the impact, first thing. It's always preferred. In fact, that's also supported by the county's own general plan. Avoid the impact, minimize it first. Offsite mitigation is the very last thing that should be considered. Effective mitigation measures are those written in clear declaratory language specifying what is required to be done, how it is to be done, when it is to be done, and who will be responsible for doing it. Use words like will and shall rather than may or should. Furthermore, measures must be feasible to undertake and complete. The paragraphs below, what I'm going to say below, will provide substantial evidence that the county has failed to adequately document what biological resources are present, how the project will impact those resources, and how it is not evaluated. All components of the project are required by SEQA when using an MND. Botanical surveys, as I said before, botanical surveys did not follow adequate protocols. Didn't, botanical surveys didn't follow the established protocols for conducting botanical surveys. The MND states that the protocols were largely followed, but you can't largely follow, you either follow them or you don't, or provide some specific instances or examples of why they were not followed, and what the ramifications of the failure to follow those protocols. None of that has been provided. The primary biological survey for the project site that the MND uses to support its arguments was performed in 1998, almost 14 years ago. Additional surveys have been conducted, but none of them have been surveyed for special status species. They've been all focusing on determining the boundaries and types of grassland habitats present on site. The, basically, in a nutshell, the botanical surveys should be done during several seasons, the spring and summer, during times when the species can be properly identified. The botanical survey for this project was done in March of 1998. No further surveys of floristic nature have ever been conducted on site. They missed whole seasons. And in fact, in Watershed Environmental's report on page nine, it qualifies the report by saying, "It should also be understood that one site visit to record taxa will only give a snapshot in time of species present. Additional surveys performed later in the season would likely result in finding additional taxa as late-developing plants emerge in flower." This supports my argument that additional surveys should have been conducted. Since the 1998 botanical survey, the California Native Plant Society's inventory of rare and endangered species in California has been updated in print once and electronically at least two times. So we have more species that are considered rare. There's been no evaluation of the project based on that since then. There's been no surveys to look for any of those additional surveys. Non-vascular plants, whole group, briophytes, mosses, liverhorts, and hornworts, and lichens have never been surveyed for. There are a number of species that are rare, some of those that occur in Santa Barbara County.
Excuse me, Mr. Magny, you have about five minutes left, and I know you have to get to grassland, so we do have your written remarks. You might want to skim over some of those and get to the heart.
All right.
Thank you.
So surveys for non-vascular plants need to be conducted to be complete. Wildlife surveys, only 1998, need additional surveys, nothing for invertebrate species, and we have rare invertebrate species. The whole area ignored. The fact that the site is used by raptors for foraging, and most of it is grassland habitat, speaks to its importance and value as habitat regardless of whether we call it native grassland or non-native grassland. The characterization of the grasslands is of concern. The, we have a whole range of conditions on the site, from some areas that are dense with Stipa pulchra, the purple needle grass, and areas where it is lacking. But there's a whole gradient in between. Where, how we characterize the grasslands takes some careful consideration and thought. One of the ways that we do that is go out there and do transects and plots and whatnot, and actually gather data in a specific manner so that we can have an unbiased presentation of the data and determine what it means. All people have biases. Many of them are unintended. And that's why we have specific protocols that we follow, using transects and various plots, to remove those biases. And one of the tenets in that scientific approach is that the plots and transects be randomly located. That means we don't make the decision where they are located. All the plots that were done were, that was biased. There was no randomness used, there are specific ways you do that, to determine where the plots are. The focus was to determine where we mapped the boundaries of the different grassland types. And so in that respect, it did, it achieved some of those objectives, but it was not done to actually characterize is where the grassland boundaries are and the grassland habitats are. So, and the sampling that was done is not statistically valid. So conclusions about what they say are really meaningless. You have to follow the scientific methods carefully before you can make accurate conclusions about the results of those, or the analysis of those. For mapping the boundaries, as again, the bias gets in the way, you know, where we draw the boundary is going to be depending on what we see on the ground and what our own opinions are. To minimize that bias is where you have the vegetation sampling that's done that can tell you for sure, without your bias getting in the way, where you draw the line to help do that, and that was not done. For the general plan policies and the thresholds, there's some policies I want to specifically point out. One is policy BioGV1 requires the county provide protection to important or sensitive environmental resources and habitats. You can read that. All the grassland areas of the project site, regardless of which species are dominant, provide valuable, important foraging habitat for a whole suite of raptor and migratory bird species, as well as other vertebrate and invertebrate species which we don't know are there. The fact is itself a reason, this fact in itself is reason to consider the grassland habitats on-site to be significant resource and mitigated all the grasslands on-site, unless we can demonstrate, unless evidence can be shown, that it is not. There is no evidence provided that says that. Policy DEVSTD, Development Standard, I assume that means, BioGV22.2 requires any offsite mitigation site be given a permanent protective easement. The impact to a portion of the grasslands, impact to a portion is proposed to be mitigated on the University of California site, West Campus Hills, guarantee you the state of California is not going to allow any easement be established on university property. So it's not likely that will happen. Galida Valley, the community plan BioGV1.15, on page 193, says, "Areas that are structurally important in protecting natural landforms and species." Now, what does that mean? I don't know. Okay, Santa Barbara County thresholds, D32A, states that a native grassland is defined as an area where native grassland species comprise 10% or more of the total cover, relative cover. Footnote 5, associated with definition, native grasslands are dominated by perennial grasses, bunch grasses such as purple needle grass tend to be patchy. This supports my description of the grasslands on-site. And that's what has found, everybody that's gone out there has found that are patchy, and the densities vary tremendously.
You're ready to wrap up?
Yes.
We're at 16 minutes.
Okay. The mitigation proposed, as I've provided in writing before, about the West Campus Bluff Site, I believe is inappropriate, and we is lacking, we're lacking data. That site has not been evaluated as part of the mitigating negdeck. If it's part of the project site where mitigation occurs, an assessment of that site must be included. It has not been done. I also have problems with using a coastal bluff site for mitigating grasslands in a different soil type, which I've outlined before, so I have concerns about that. And you also, if you're just mitigating for a grassland habitat, for as grassland, as a plant community, you are, you already have that basic community present on the West Campus Bluff Site. You will not provide any additional mitigation for the loss of foraging habitat for raptors by enhancing what's already there. So you have an unmitigated impact. So in two paragraphs left, SEQA requires all components of the sites associated with the project must be assessed as part of the review, and particularly for an MND, the offsite mitigation set has not been assessed. It needs to be before an MND can be used, and I believe that there are unmitigable impacts with using offsite mitigation, particularly for foraging in wildlife. With those considerations, an MND isn't appropriate. Additional surveys need to be conducted before we can really understand what the impacts are of the project and the biological resources, and the best document for that is the EIR. Okay, for that.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners in listening to Mr. Magny's presentation? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since Ms. Mooney's here, hopefully we'll hear some response from her.
We will.
Okay, fine, but I don't have any specific questions for her.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Magny. Ms. Mooney, you may want to address this at this point since it's fresh, but if not, if you'd rather wait and hear comments from the public first, we can do that, too.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm prepared to address at least some of these issues that were raised in the previous letter. Some of the issues that, I just received the letter this morning, I haven't had a chance to review that, but if you'd like, I'd like to go through some of, at least some of the issues at this time.
We would like to hear from you, Commissioner of Commissioner of Lencia would like us to take a two-minute break, but in terms of time management, commissioners, do you feel like we can work through the first part of the lunch hour here to get some public speakers in that might have to leave? Okay. We'll come back at 12:15, and we'll pick up with you, Ms. Mooney. Thank you. (music) And the staff biologist, Melissa Mooney, is about to comment on the presentation made by Mr. Magni, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, you've already said who I am. I feel like I should say my name, Melissa Mooney. I'm the biologist for the planning department. I'm going to give you a quick, two-minute summary of the issues, and then I do, I should let you know that in response to the two letters that came in from Dave Magni, Environmental Consulting, I've prepared some draft written responses. Now, given that we've a third letter received today, what I'd propose is that I update this memo, and we can provide written responses to each of those comments, if that's your choice. The key issue, as you know, is the loss of native grasslands on this site, which is a 14-acre site, and it's surrounded by development. To address the issue of adequate surveys and reports, I'd like to point out that, as Mr. Magni said, that there were two reports prepared. They were prepared by Watershed Environmental, one in 1999 and another in 2010. The survey in 1999 was a quantitative survey. It was conducted in March of 1998, which is generally the proper season of year to be sampling in grasslands. The update, although it was conducted in August of 2010, did result in additional information. In 1999, there were five grassland stands identified. In 2010, I believe we identified eight grassland stands. That second survey by Mark de La Garza followed a site visit that I conducted in the spring, well, actually, in the fall of 2010. And I, in addition to those two reports that Mark de La Garza and Watershed Environmental have prepared, I personally have been on the project site five times in spring, summer, and winter. The last time I was there was in spring of 2011. I was there in March and April, and that's when I conducted the rapid assessment relevé sampling that forms the basis for the initial study. I've also visited the proposed mitigation site, although I haven't done detailed analysis in that location, but I have been to the mitigation site. So it's my professional opinion that through the surveys that Mark de La Garza's Watershed Environmental has prepared, and through the on-site visits that I've conducted, that the surveys referred to in the initial study are adequate from a SEQA perspective. Now, as you know, there've been a number of comment letters. I mentioned the two by David Magni. There's an additional letter from Mark de La Garza that we received, I believe it was on Monday, and I hope you've received that letter, because that letter responds to some of the issues raised by Mr. Magni also, primarily the need for surveying for lichen species and some of the sampling method analysis. There were some, a little bit hodgepodge here because so many issues have come up, but what I separate, I separate these into five broad areas, if you will, in terms of the technical nature. There's a comment regarding our sampling techniques. There's comments regarding the vegetation mapping that was done. More comments regarding the grassland definition, the need for additional surveys, which, as I mentioned, I believe has been addressed by Mark de La Garza, and the adequacy of the mitigation. Now, I believe, as I've indicated earlier, that our sampling methods are adequate under SEQA guidelines. As you know, well, I'll leave it at that. I also believe that the vegetation mapping is adequate. It's acknowledged that the boundaries of these grasslands are hazy. That's normally the case in biology. Plant communities don't stop and start at very specific places, and we have to make interpretations. The biologists make interpretations when they draw their maps. A vegetation map is essentially an interpretation of what the biologist is seeing on the ground. Another important issue, and so I guess I should conclude by saying that I believe the boundaries of the polygons and the grasslands as mapped by Watershed Environmental are accurate as they can be, given the limitations that we have to deal with in the SEQA process. The issue of grassland definitions is one that comes up. It came up on the preserve at San Marcos and just about every project that we deal with in native grasslands. The question of what is a native grassland comes up, and I've discussed this with staff at the Department of Fish and Game. My professional opinion is that what's really happening here is that there's some confusion over a grassland containing native species. It could be just 1% Nacella pulchra, and a native grassland that requires mitigation under the county's SEQA environmental thresholds. The county has set up very specific rules, if you will, the 10% cover criteria, the size criteria, to help us to indicate what native grasslands are required to be mitigated for. I mean, essentially, many native grasslands contain native species, and so I want to emphasize, there's a difference between a grassland containing native species that's less than the county's threshold and a native grassland requiring mitigation, and that gets to that 10% cover criteria. Let me see, what else was? The comments regarding fair argument in general plan policies, I'm going to defer to other staff to address. I think that's, let's see, there was another comment regarding the criteria used to determine the habitat quality. I think that's discussed in the negative declaration. It's the basic standard criteria for describing plant communities that relates to the cover of native species, the number of native species present, the structure of the habitat, those types of things, and that's all presented in the negative declaration. I think the issue with regard to, there's a statement that there's no evaluation of rare species. Again, I've been on the site four or five times, many times in the spring, and the biological consultant, the initial surveys were conducted in the spring. There's been no evidence presented so far that there are any rare species on-site. The issue with regard to, this gets a little tricky, and I'm going to look to my colleagues here for a little bit of help. With regard to the protection of annual grasslands in addition to native grasslands as a foraging habitat, was addressed to a certain extent in the Galita Community Plan, and it's addressed in the negative declaration as a cumulative impact. And in the Galita Community Plan, I believe those impacts were determined to be significant and unavoidable, and a statement of overriding considerations was prepared. So the ND acknowledges that. We acknowledge that this is a grassland that has foraging habitat value, but again, a point back to the Galita Community Plan to address that issue. Unless you have any additional questions, that's all I've written down at this point.
Mr. Magni mentioned the transfer location at UCSB being from a different ecosystem, and you said you'd been there to look at it. How do we address the concern that what we're doing is moving it in such a way so that there is not mitigation for this project? We're moving it to an area that is already open and providing foraging. What's the advantage that is trading off for taking the grasslands away from their current location?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's a very good question, and staff has wrestled with this whole, with the whole concept of mitigation for the loss of grasslands on this site. Prior to ending up at the UCSB site, I believe that there was an attempt to find other habitats in the immediate vicinity. They were even looking, I believe, at some county lands in the area, and none of those panned out, if you will, from the standpoint of becoming feasible sites. I share the concern that this is a different, essentially a different habitat. I mean, these would be bluff-top grasslands out at UCSB as opposed to the, if you call them, the Piedmont grasslands of the preserve at San Marcos in that area. So I share that concern. But I guess in the absence of another alternative being available to us, and because of the size of the site, the fact that it is surrounded by development, we've sort of, if you will, made the trade-off and decided that this is an appropriate mitigation.
Commissioner Brown?
Yep, thank you. Along that vein, is there any reason? Let me back up. My observation of foraging habitat, for instance, say for whitetail kites, is in the Galita area. I see them flying around Lake Los Canaros and properties to the south where I don't think there's any grassland. But the question here, though, is that, I want to be careful what I use here, because I don't want you to think that I'm trying to minimize this, but it does seem to me that oftentimes these raptors sort of adapt to their situation. There's red-shouldered hawks in my neighborhood. There's blue herons that come into the ball field and take gophers. And I'm thinking that in the 2007 plan, where some of the mitigation were in people's backyards for these grasslands, that here there's an opportunity on this detention basin to not plant natives, other kinds of natives, but to plant it in grasslands, in native grasses. Is that not a consideration? And would that not be, while it's not a totally acceptable in terms of the county's rules, but would that not help facilitate some of the loss of the grassland to do that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, staff has had discussions about the use of the detention basin as a mitigation site, and that was proposed, actually, by the applicant. And we've essentially determined that because of the public use of that detention basin, it negates its use as a mitigation site, essentially. Or it, yes, I'll leave it at that.
But how would that be any different than at UCSB where they're going to do the mitigation, where people can walk through it? I mean, there will be no prohibition for people from walking through those grasslands. So it's not much different, I don't think. I don't know the exact arrangement at UCSB. I've been out there. I've seen where they're going to do that, but it wouldn't seem to me that it would make that much difference.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, it is true that there are trails out there at the UCSB site. Frankly, we haven't gotten to that level of specificity because we're still requiring a final restoration plan. We have the concepts of the restoration, but we don't have the final restoration plan yet. That's a very good question, and we'll have to sort of look into that further.
But could not this site, I don't know how deep this detention basin is, or how shallow it is, maybe Mr. Tuttle can tell me, and certainly parts of the detention basin probably where at the bottom, if it is going to be accepting water, wouldn't be acceptable anyway to plant native grasses because they tend to be drier side. But certainly, there's pieces there on the southeastern edge where you could plant, you could do some restoration there of native grasslands. People aren't probably going to be walking down those slopes, I wouldn't imagine, and I'm not sure what people, what kind of recreation there would be anyway with people where there's native plants. I see you have a trail around there, but, Mr. Tuttle?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, yeah, I mean, if you recall the 2007 plan, the restoration, at that point, it only required 2.7 acres of restoration, given the size of the grasslands that were mapped at that time. And so that was going to be accommodated in the detention basin. As part of that 2007 plan, there was no proposal for public use of the basin. It was just going to be for detention purposes and for restoration purposes. But then, there was also going to be about 0.7 acres running through the backs of the lots in that vicinity. We looked at the feasibility of following a similar approach in this instance. Because of the increase and expansion of grasslands on-site, we're now looking at a requirement for following our standard two-to-one ratio of six acres, and to accommodate that on-site was shown to be infeasible. But in terms of use of the detention basin, as Ms. Mooney indicated, from a restoration standpoint, because of the interest of the applicant to have public use of the bottom of that basin during dry periods, which, to answer your earlier question, is shallow. So when it's not being used for detention purposes, it can serve a recreational function. Because of the use of the basin for recreational purposes by the residents, that diminishes its restoration value. It doesn't void it out completely, so there is still some value to be gained there. And certainly, I think if the plan for the detention basin were to be modified so that instead of the native shrub species and other plants that were proposed there, it was more of a grassland-type component, then it would certainly have some restorative value and value for foraging habitat, just not to the same degree as if it weren't used by the public or by the residents of the site. If you were to eliminate the path or modify the recreational component of that basin, you could also further enhance its value.
Okay.
Just to add one more point, though, even if the entire basin were to be set aside for restoration, we'd still be looking for additional acreage off-site to fulfill the necessary requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, and thank you, Ms. Mooney. I'm not sure what your schedule permits, but it's certainly valuable to have you here. Commissioner?
If I could just follow on, Ms. Mooney indicated that she'd be providing written responses, and I'm wondering, you've indicated you already have some of those, the written responses to previous correspondence by Mr. Magni?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, that's correct. I have drafted a memo at this point.
Okay. And you'd indicated you would be willing to do some other additional written responses to his letter today, which probably is not significantly different than the previous ones we've received.
If that's your desire.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful to the commission, since the issues are fairly complex.
Yes. Okay, let's go to public comment and see if we can get some speakers here who might not be able to return with us in the afternoon. One who indicated that was the case is Chris O'Connor. The second speaker is Mary Vickers. Okay. Well, let's see after Chris, who might not be able to.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, afternoon. It's already afternoon.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Cooney and fellow commissioners. Thank you for having me up here today. My name is Christopher O'Connor, and I reside at 4691 Law Spotted Drive. I'd like to clear some misstatement of facts from the applicant, Mr. Jeffrey C. Nelson. In the Declaration of the County of Santa Barbara dated August 5, 2011, Mr. Nelson stated the incorrect fact. As a response to the MND, one neighbor, Chris O'Connor, testified in writing that he and his family used this access in the last fire evacuation, raised issues about its adequacy. That letter's dated July 18, 2011, that I wrote to the commission. He and his wife have opposed the development of this property from the outset of our application and interaction with neighbors. Their house, a two-story home, looks out on Park Hills property from 450 feet to the north. Many of the proximate neighbors to the property are currently enjoying views over this undeveloped property, providing the input to the MND. Were also people who express concern with the emergency access through Tucker Grove. I have photos showing you that my home is not a two-story home, if you'd like to have those for the record, from all different aspects of it. Further, Mr. Nelson signed the declaration. Further, Mr. Nelson signed the declaration, "I declare under the penalty of perjury," that, under the laws of the state of California, "that the foregoing is true and correct." Mr. Nelson has perjured himself by misstating facts. He is correct. My property does lie approximately 450 feet to the north of the Park Hills estate on La Spada. However, I do not have a two-story home, as stated by Mr. Nelson. Our home faces the mountains, as we have a distant ocean view from the southwest corner of our property. We are not in proximity of the subject property. For the applicant to imply our true concern lies with protecting views, not emergency access, is not only offensive, but seeks to minimize one of the most horrific, and many horrific events many of us have experienced. This speaks volumes about the tactics and twisting of facts he has used throughout this process. Misstatements such as these are exactly why we're asking for an EIR of the project. Mr. Nelson has written and made public comment about working with the neighborhood and how interested he is in filling this hole in our neighborhood. I've only been to one meeting held by Mr. Nelson, and that meeting, he stated, "This project will be built whether we like it or not." He went on to further state, "This, this doesn't need input from the neighborhood," but was basically offering us a glimpse into his vision. "This development is the right under the bonus density law," he went further, he stated further. "I've had no other interaction with him regarding this project." I've, I've met Mr. Nelson one time at, at that event, or actually, I didn't meet him, I was, I went to an event he spoke at. "Mr. Nelson continues to try to paint a picture of a neighborhood against development and only concerned with the impact to the properties. This is false. What we've requested is the county take into account our safety and first and foremost." My letter dated July 18, 2011, focused on the errors, in fact, within the draft MND. The MND falsely states that the neighborhood has an alternative route to the north from La Riaada in the event of another disaster. We've covered that, we've talked about that, it doesn't exist. This actually does not exist. The MND shows that its access road crossing through the Hanaran property connecting La Riaada lane to Villa de Regina. In my comments, I provided a response from the Hanaran, stating, "An emergency does not exist and would be built, would not be built there in the future. They do not, they will not be moving far with the subdivision. The proposed road was connected to a newly widened and paved portion of La Riaada. The La Riaada improvements have been a condition of approval for La Ramana development. Both projects have these conditions for approval. Park Hills Estate should have the same conditions for approval. With respect to the, to, for both my family and the neighborhood's safety, the county required the Tucker's Grove Emergency Access properly updated before any new development can be approved. Again, we have no problem with the development, as long as it is appropriately follows the county regulations. We have heard from the county that economic benefit for them or the developer will not play part in any approval. It appears to me Mr. Nelson continually speaks about increased associated costs and economic viability, viabilities being the primary driver for changing the approved 2007 Park Hills Estate plan. Thank you."
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And, would you like the photos?
No, no, your testimony is sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward?
I would.
Please. If there's anyone else that, that can't, and we're talking about a fairly short break, why don't you come over against the wall there, and we'll, we'll get you up next. You, you are, sir?
I'm Ted Sands. I'm resident of Park Highlands, interested in the issue of the Park Hills as it affects Park Highlands. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for hearing about the issue of public safety. I'm concerned also about mitigation of matters such as grasslands and so on, but I am even more concerned, and as is indicated by an earlier speaker, perhaps biased on the matter of human safety as it relates to fires which we live with and many of us experience several occasions. I am greatly concerned about ingress and egress from our area adjacent to the Park Hills develop. Somewhat reluctantly, Park Highlands went along and okayed the original plan, I believe in 1902, pardon me, 2007, with 12 homes. But with the increase in homes, we definitely are opposed to this program. I'd like to give you a brief history of what has happened to our access and to our roads in that area. In the 1970s, when we acquired the property at Park Highlands on Villa los Padres, we were shown a map of an overpass leading from Turnpike across the park, leading into San Antonio Creek Road was, which was to be widened. That was given to us as a map issued by the county, approved by the county. That was later taken out of consideration. We were also shown a road through the park, which was not closed until 1976. I'm sorry to say that Mr. Nelson was in error when he indicated it was taken out of service in 1944, or 1974. It was actually taken out of service at least two years after that. We had every expectation that that road would be available, because it was being used for the first year or more that we lived there. The highway to San Antonio Road and 154, those turnoffs were restricted in the late 1970s. Left turns could not be made, pardon me, right turns could not be made coming down 154 onto San Antonio Road. Left turns could not be made from San Antonio Creek Road onto 154, because of the increase in traffic on the Highway 154, and because of the increase in traffic on Villa los Padres and Villa los Santos.
Are, are you about to wrap up, Mr.?
I'm just about to wrap up.
Okay, great, thanks.
My concern is human safety. The fire department objected when we wanted to open up the road through the park, because they said with traffic coming out of that area, they could not take, get access with fire trucks. In fact, there were no fire trucks in that area during the Painted Cave Fire. Had I been at fire chief, I would not have ordered trucks into that chaos. If we add each additional home, each additional car that is added to that area with limited access and closed off access to that, not only that road, but other roads, there would be a catastrophe that would reach the headlines, because it would be loss, not of grasslands, but loss of life. And we did have one loss of life during the Painted Cave Fire, and the potential for the other evacuations which we have made in that area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sands.
Hello?
Hi.
Whoops, oh, shoot.
That's a $50 fine.
Okay. Karen McDonald, and I live on Villa Clarice, which is a little ways up from the development, so I'm not so concerned with views, but again...
Excuse me, just a second. Mr. Tuttle, could we get a, a neighborhood view up so that when people testify, if we have, I'm not sure where Park Highlands is, for example? That would be great.
Okay. I also am greatly concerned with the traffic and the fires. In fact, had we known when we bought our house about the fire dangers there, I would have never bought in that area. But we've been evacuated twice, and 154 has been closed off, and it really doesn't matter in this development if there are two roads for ingress and egress, because of, you know, it'd be different if this were a development downtown. But this is a high-fire-risk area, and to try to get another 40, 50 cars out of there in times of tragedy, it just wouldn't happen. A lot of the information that the staff has used has been 20 years old. I'm not going to detail all that, because that would take up too much time. Also, I, I don't know how many of the people here are aware that the developer has threatened to sue the county if he doesn't get his way with this development, and we're, we're just all tired of being threatened with this. Safety is our main issue. We all agreed to the 2007 development plan, which was 12 homes, and that's a lot for that little tiny space, because if you look at the area, all of our homes are on at least an acre or an acre or more. Everyone here has homes worth $2 and $3 million, so we're going to see our property values decrease, even though the county thinks it's going to get extra money with the extra homes. That's my main issue.
Thank you.
The safety issue also.
I didn't find a speaker slip. Did you fill one out for us?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we'll, we'll get it together. Thank you very much for coming, Ms. McDonald.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. My name is Bee Hamlin. I'm a resident of Park Highlands. I live on Villa los Padres. I've lived there since 1973. I lost my home during the Painted Cave Fire, and let me tell you, exiting at that time was one of the most horrific experiences I've ever had. The, the road up through Tucker's Grove now looks like a private road. It does not give any indication that anyone can go down through there, and I do remember when I first moved, it was, you were allowed to go up through Tucker's Grove, and in my VW Bug, I once met a fire truck on patrol coming down at the corner of that road. I would like to have assurance that you are going to take some type of safety precautions for the people who have lived there and will continue to live there. It's a matter of vital importance in life. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Hamlin. Our, our line is getting longer. Let me assure you, if you have any choice at all, we're not going to take a long lunch break, but we'll see if we can get everybody in before we do. Yes, sir?
My name is Jim Suisse. I live also with Chairman McDonald on Villa Clarice. I was asked to read this for William McNamara. I don't know the man, but he wanted to get his comments into the record. He had to take his wife into therapy this morning. So, I'll try to quote him verbatim, and the, he is referring to page 14 of the MND, has the following statement. "The average parcel size under the proposed project would be lower than the average parcel size for properties in the north, south, and west, but consistent with properties to the east." Close quote. "A consistency of average parcel size with properties to the east is an inappropriate measure of the need for a full EIR, because the properties are otherwise not similar. Almost all of the less-than-one-acre properties to the east, but the San Antonio Creek Arroyo Green Belt. The county approved these less-than-1E1 lots with the understanding both that no development would ever happen on the eastern edge of these lots, and that these less-than-1E1 lots were not a precedent for the area. Many people who purchased in this area did so under the understanding that the county would honor its commitments." My wife and I live at 1008 San Antonio Creek War, Road. Our parcel is .76 acres. The western boundary is at San Antonio Creek Road. The parcel runs from the road east to the berm of the San Antonio Creek Arroyo and down the scarp to the permanent county greenbelt on the eastern boundary. This greenbelt ensures that there will be no construction to the east of our parcel. This open-space boundary provides the same lot appearance and building density as on 1E1 lots elsewhere in the neighborhood. The parcels both to the north and the south of ours are similar, being similar in size to ours, but giving the appearance of a 1E1 lot, because they are bounded by permanent open space. This situation is true for many of the parcels to the east of the proposed Park Hills Estate. The proposed project, however, is completely surrounded by development and has no greenbelt or open spaces for mitigation of small lot appearances, or small lot, of small lot appearance or high building density appearances. Finally, because of these dissimilarities, the implication of the proposed project's consistency with properties to the east is invalid, and therefore should not be used to conclude that building density does not require impact review and mitigation. Were the county to approve the proposed project with its present densities, the county would be abrogating its former promises of lot-size protection." So writes Mr. William McNamara. Thank you.
Well-read, Mr. Suisse. Mrs. Ishkani, and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Judith Ishkani, and I'm with Neighborhood Defense League. And, once zoning, once we leave zoning law and get into extended planning and development, it does invite outside participation, which we represent. San Antonio Creek residents approached Neighborhood Defense League with questions about process, county process, and, and so, in response to that, we had a subcommittee of our board, and we went to meet with the county with questions about process. And to make a long story short, the bottom line is, is that the phase of county staff involvement was basically done, and the time for action, which is the Santa Barbara Planning Commission, has begun. And hence, that's why communications change during this time. Be that as it may, that means zoning law, which you're charged to protect, is under fire here, under your consideration, and the, and your decision is what will stand, unless it is appealed to the County Board of Supervisors. Since we had our meeting with the staff, I was interested in a letter from Mr. Nelson to the Commissioners, which is public view, which had some interesting points. And one was about the sewer situation, because it states, and also an interesting, very interesting presentation about the sewer main being at Villa los Santos, and the people from Galita Sanitary District coming out and saying they would need a pump station unless the height of, I believe it was Lot 10, was it Lot 10, Mr. Nelson? Yeah, Lot 10 would be higher. And that, my goodness, the only time you need a pump station is when the lots are below the sewer main. And having gone purposely, of course, viewed like many others on that area, I see that Villa los Santos is very much lower any part of the property that is under consideration. Why in the world, you'd need to have an advisor come in and tell you from Galita Sanitary District? Why would you advise someone that they might have to have a pump station unless the heights were elevated? I, I'm on Montecito Sanitary District, and that raised questions in my mind. Many people have advocated a EIR. This is a more reason for considering the whole sewage situation, but that's not for me to advise. I do, have been to St. Athanasius Church and to the synagogue for events, and to my amazement, as I toured recently, I see there's also a huge Presbyterian church, there's preschools, and I can say that from Friday through Sunday night, there's going to be a lot of outside population coming into these narrow, extraordinarily narrow streets, especially Villa los Santos. And I want to know if there's a traffic impact study been done yet? Because during that time, when you have high traffic from outsiders, should something happen during that time, I, I would shudder to think. Risk factors should be taken into consideration. The off-site mitigation, which is being exhaustively discussed today, would it be necessary if you stuck with the 2007 requirement of, of 12 homes only? It seems to me that the added houses are causing the need to transfer environmental impacts to other ecosystems, and I think there's a lot to consider, and so I would advise against a precipitous decision today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Members of the Planning Commission and County Staff. My name is Jim Westby. I'm also a member of the Neighborhood Defense League, and I'm here today to support the neighbors and residents of the San Antonio Creek area. I'm requesting the Planning Commission to take into account the work and data that was done and completed by the staff for the 2007 project, for this same land site. And I submitted this for you today, and I'm sure you've seen it before, but I'd like to just quote from it, because I think it's, it's important data. Paragraph 22, 3.4, it said, "This site is entitled, this site not physically suited for the proposed density of development. The 14.36-acre project site zoning of 1E1 would potentially allow for up..." The 14.36-acre project site zoning of 1E1 would potentially allow for up to 14 single-family residential lots. However, the subdivision would include," that was being proposed at that time, "12 one-acre single residency parcels and one 2.2-acre open space parcel. The open space parcel includes critical project components, including the on-site site, stormwater retardation basin, the second access road, native bunch grass restoration, and a remnant foraging area for birds of prey. The site would not be physically suited for the maximum density allowed by the site zoning of 14 single-family homes due to sign constraints. However, the site is suitable for the proposed density development of 12 single-family homes with the incorporation of the necessary features provided by the designated open space lot and subjected to the project conditions of approval." Now, it goes on to the next paragraph of 3.5 where it talks about how important that this extra open space is to protect habitat. And I'm not going to read that. You can read that at your will. It seems the importance of lower density on this onsite to protect mitigation, the proposal you have today is for 16 units. Now, if you just do the math here, that's 33% increase. It doesn't sound like much when you say four more units, but it's 33% increase in density over the 2007 plan and conflicts with the findings that I just read to you. This proposal also includes off-site mitigation that we've been talking about here for most of the morning, which will be done at a lower level, a different temperature, a different humidity level, and basically a total different ecosystem. It doesn't take a rocket science to figure out you're not going to get the same result than if you did the mitigation where the project is. And this is why the only real answer, I believe, the Planning Commission can make is to do a full EIR report to find out the true answer. Because everything is kind of speculation, what we've been talking about. And I think the biologists that presented here made that point well. If you decide not to do that, and maybe, then I think the wiser course of action would be to go forward with the intent of the 2007 plan. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Westby.
Hi, my name is Nancy Sheldon, and I live at 1014 Villa Los Padres. We're the corner lot that butts up against Lot 10. And while we agree with the concerns expressed about density, parking, and emergency access, I'm going to talk about Lot 10. And I came here and I spoke to you guys before, and I showed you the dramatic scene we'd have behind our house if it was built as planned. And now I'd like to offer up a few solutions that I'd hope you would consider, and I hope you make part of the conditions for approval. After that meeting, we reached out to Mr. Nelson, and we did, my husband had a meeting with him at the beginning, late last week, early this week. And we do appreciate the concessions he has made, but we don't think they go far enough. We would ask that you give serious consideration to keeping Lot 10 at its natural topography. I mean, as you drive through our neighborhood, one of the most beautiful things about it is that it's got these rolling hills, and the homes are built into the neighborhood. And we don't see why he can't build a home that steps down. Now, I understand we would need pumps to allow pumping the sewage uphill, but we're talking about one home, four bathrooms. And we're hoping that you can help us give him the ability to pump uphill so that we can have this home built into the natural topography. It was also part of the 2007 plan. It was in the design standards that they would build homes, and they showed pictures of them that stepped down like they do, like they currently do in the neighborhood. And it'll also help create character in his own neighborhood. We would also ask that you limit the height of the home to 18 feet. Having an 18-foot home does not limit where the bathrooms need to be. I understand the sewage does, but limiting the home to 18 feet would not impact that. And that was also in the 2007 plan, and it could also help mitigate some of these very large problems that we have. We would also ask that you allow hedging along the western border of the property because right now you only talk about allowing native grasses. So we respectfully request that you allow a hedge of approximately 16 to 25 feet, depending upon where this home ends up, that they would be able to put on their lot. And I don't know whether this is within your power to add this to the conditions of approval, but we'd also request, and we had discussed this with Mr. Nelson, a landscape easement where we're able to, because the space that's nearest to our home that's on his lot, there's, it's a hill, and you know, it's going to be a hill that you're not going to be able to build anything on, that if we use that for an easement and maybe push the hedge back 20 to 25 feet, it will also mitigate the impact that this home will have on the neighbors. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you in advance for considering these requests. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sheldon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Steve Hines. I live at 4659 La Espada Drive, which on the map is just north of the subject property. I was asked today to read a letter from my neighbor Nancy Harrington, who has lived in the neighborhood for quite some time. You'll hear again about the Painted Cave and the safety concerns of our whole neighborhood. So in Nancy's words, "Due to physical limitations, I am not able to attend the hearing. However, as a 39-year resident of the San Antonio Creek area, I feel compelled to give my input as to the appropriateness of what can only be termed as a high-density development that is being planned along San Antonio Creek Road, Villa Los Santos, and Pennell Road, known as the Park Hill Estates. I live on La Espada Drive, a hidden cul-de-sac that is truly one of those streets that is meant when they describe someplace that is hard to find the first time. When we experienced our first Santa Ana winds at the changing of the seasons that somehow seemed to target our property's exact location, we still did not imagine that they would one day bring with them the one eventuality I hadn't thought of that would destroy our California dream. But that it did, when in 1990 what became known as the Painted Cave Fire literally blew up that dream. Only by seeing and smelling what I thought was far-off smoke did my neighbor's son and I decide to drive a few blocks away to see how close it might be. We witnessed the grass burning at what is now known as La Romana Estates. I literally sped home to alert my husband we had to get out. The panic that I felt at that time is indescribable, and it brings tears to my eyes as I write this. San Antonio Creek Road was end-to-end cars snaking down towards Los Santos Drive. Cars coming out of the feeder streets along the road, which were not even built up as much as they are today, slowed our descent as the line of cars made room for them to enter. Chased by the windswept fire, we miraculously all made it out of that fire trap to the safety of the city. Although I soon discovered that it somehow had followed us, and ironically, just as we were talking about, talking and watching the fire from our friend's house in Galleta with grateful relief, we remarked that at least we could live in the small duplex off Modoc Road that we had invested in. The station was televising its address sign, which was already burning, and we had the bad luck of also losing that property as one of the few structures that burned before the winds relented sometime after sundown. Since that occasion, I've had to evacuate my rebuilt house twice, each time only by a miracle that the winds changed direction before coming in our direction, giving us time to clear out most valuable items. The area has had more and more dwellings permitted on closer and closer lots to take advantage of this valuable land. Our luck cannot hold out forever. No amount of fire safety can hold back those windswept fires when they come the route only nature decides to take them. No new exits have been made to hold the ever-increasing amount of households that will need to be evacuated. People who have not been through an experience such as this cannot imagine what it is like. And until the next one occurs, the last ones are forgotten by those who only have heard about them. Allowing ever more dwellings to be built before something is done to make this a safer area to evacuate is inviting disaster. Before any more permits are allowed, and especially for such high-density plans as the Park Hill Estates, all other environmental causes aside, please construct some additional and safer exits. There could be many lives that you will be grateful you have saved, and you will not have to say, "If only we had listened." That's from Nancy Harrington, a resident of La Espada Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Thank you.
And thanks to Ms. Harrington. Okay, it's 10 after, how much time would you like for a break, Commissioners?
Twenty minutes.
Half hour? Okay. We'll compromise at half hour, is that okay? So we'll be back at, let's say, quarter to two with the idea of completing our work on the project this afternoon. application. And we were in the midst of public testimony, which we will return to now unless there's anything staff wants to begin with. Nothing? Our first speaker is David Brown. He'll be followed by Jason Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, thank you for giving us a chance to speak with you. This has been going on, as you know, since 2007. And I'm just going to summarize from my viewpoint that the neighborhood really hasn't, I'm sorry, I live at 1075 San Antonio Creek Road, the corner, the northeast corner directly, yeah, right there, or on the other side, but, yeah, right there. Doesn't matter. We were very involved in the 2007 plan, had meetings at the House, worked with the current owners who want to sell to the Nelsens, and worked with their land planner, and arrived at a plan that seemed reasonable given the time period. And so as we are here where we find ourselves today, the question is, the staff in 2007, as someone quoted right before lunch, said that it wouldn't support more than 12 lots for a lot of reasons. And I haven't heard anything from Mr. Nelson, and we've worked together many times and have been to his office, and he's been to our homes, and there's been an honest effort here to try to get this together, but I haven't still heard why legally, why that 12 doesn't still hold. And the reason I care, I suppose, is three things. Number one, of course, the Sheldon situation by itself is bad enough because of the situation they face, and it sounds like some efforts being made to accommodate them, but she still seems unhappy, and I would be too if I lived where she lived. The fire problem, you know, since 2007, we've been evacuated twice, once mandatory. And we don't really, we've been talking about this since the beginning, but we don't really have those three ways out. Neither of the last two times, we were not allowed to exit 3154. We were told very clearly we had to go south. And you heard from the fire chief himself this morning, it's right now, unless you force something to happen, it's not a practical outlet to consider Tucker's Grove. It's just not. Go drive it yourself. I mean, it's a very narrow, very problematic area, and there's numerous places where one car could end up getting stuck and blocking everybody else, and then that'll all be there, and it'd be a mess. And you just have to go look for yourself. I mean, it's just not a good thing. So that really leaves us that one spot. We just have one way out down to San Marcos, where we're all merging, coming down San Marcos, down, for whatever reason, I've forgotten the name of the, the De La Santas, and trying to get out to Cathedral Oaks. So we haven't heard, we haven't heard why the, how these things are resolved. We have the biological issues, which came up all day, and so I'm not an attorney, but I don't know, I'm a scientist, and I look here and I say, "Well, I see problems, and we're not making progress towards solving the problems. Why can we have more than 12 now? Why should we have more than 12 now?" Mr. Nelson says it's economically necessary. Well, that's, could be solved between he and the landowner by lowering the price a little bit so that he doesn't have to have 14. I mean, that's not, I don't think that should be your issue as to whether economically it's an issue. And so we are where we are, and if, I guess on behalf of myself, behalf of the neighbors that I work with, if your decision's to go ahead with this, you know, we will appeal because it's the only choice we have. And we will litigate, and I'm a businessman scientist, and the worst, you know, we all know that attorneys are the only ones that win. And so those of you who are attorneys are probably hoping that happens, but it will happen. It will happen. I mean, obviously, Mr. Nelson has threatened litigation in writing to you all, and I'm not threatening it, I'm just saying, what course would we have? We thought 12 was the most this should be, and we thought we came to agreement on that, and here we are. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Oh, a question of this witness?
Yes.
Commissioner Valancia.
You asked for an answer, and I don't really have the whole answer for you, but I have some parameters for you. First of all, the 12 units, the law says, from Sacramento, not from San Barbara, that if you build an affordable house, you get a 25% bonus. So now, he had 12, he can get 16. That's the law. Secondly, you're wondering-
And that trumps, I'm sorry, Commissioner-
That trumps Santa Barbara County, yeah.
That trumps the reasons the staff said 12 was the maximum.
There's a lot of good reasons why we shouldn't do things, but we do them because the law says you do them, you know? But I don't have all the answers. The answers will come from this board here, but I'm giving you part of the parameters. You're a scientific man, you like to evaluate all the parameters. The other parameter is that for a second road, Captain Pippins told you that if the development has less than 30 units, they're only required to have one major road out, and that's what they have. Well, they have two. They have an optional road that takes you out. There's a second parameter. Just trying to give you some parameters that you can put in your equation to try to solve your, you know, sometimes in science, we always try to make A B equals C, and sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes it says congruent or apparent or, you know? And that's, that's that type of equation, it appears.
No, I appreciate those thoughts very much, and I understand those thoughts. It doesn't make it easier on us thinking about why we should be in favor of this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Just to get to the root of this 12 number, I'd like Mr. Tuttle to respond about how the county made this in this document, which is the findings. Can you address that? Did you get this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the finding in question is, it's not a sequo finding or a finding from the negative declaration as many people have indicated. It's a finding required for a subdivision finding requirement. And if you're reading it, it does speak to the fact that the zoning would potentially allow up to 14 single-family residential lots. That's based on the one-acre minimum parcel size. However, because the project is providing a two-plus-acre open space- is providing a two-plus acre open space, there's really only 12 acres remaining, which under the standard zoning would accommodate 12 residential lots. So again, I did not write this finding back in 2007, so I can't, and I'm hesitant to speak for the thinking that went involved, was involved in it. But one read could be that with a two-acre open space and 12 one-acre lots, only on a 14-acre site, that's the maximum that the site can accommodate. Now, we're in a situation where the lots are less than one acre, so it can accommodate more lots within the same amount of space. That's one potential read, but again, I did not write this, so I can't say exactly what they had in mind in putting it together.
But overall, as you indicated, this is not a SEQA finding. This is a finding for the prop for...perhaps, Ms. Alme, you can explain to what document this was attached.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I can't explain because I was there in 2007.
Okay, thank you.
And the facts at that time, as Alex said, were very different. The project was different, and the resources on the site were different. We're four years later, or five years later. I don't do math too well, and so the facts are different today. There are many ti...there are, I have seen several times when a planning commission has written a finding like this intending to alert future decision-makers who may have a project before them on the same parcel, that they felt strongly that they were making findings for, they were making findings for the maximum amount of development that was there. But as counsel cautioned at the time the finding was made, and at the time that I've heard it else time, one body really can't bind the hands of another commission. So while that finding is out there for the 2007 project and the facts there that didn't include a density bonus project, those findings may be different for you, looking at this particular case, given today's, today's facts.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I'll just speak to your discretion as a commission. You have discretion to make the findings based upon the evidence that's before you. And you, Ms. Alme is correct, that a previous planning commission cannot bind your decision on a project. You have a different set of facts before you. You have different testimony. You have documents, and that's the basis for your decision, and you have discretion to make, to decide whether or not you can make the findings on the project. And the previous findings made by a previous commission do not bind your decision on this matter.
Commissioner Valencia, did you have something else?
No.
Okay. I would like to finish up public testimony before we get too far into some of the challenging issues. Jeff, Jason. Jason, followed by Mary Vickers.
Thank you, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. My name is Jason Nelson. I'm with the project team for Park Hill. Stephen Zelik, the property owner, regretfully was unable to attend this hearing. He had a work conflict in San Francisco where he lives, and he requested that I relay his remarks from his letter of December 7th to the planning commission in the public comments, so I'll do so. "Commissioners and planners, I hope that the hearing of January 25th will determine the matter and will make, I will make every effort to be in attendance. I wish to address or readdress some of the issues before you. Much has been made of the fire danger. It is highly absurd to suggest that because of wildfire danger, homes should not be built. What should and does occur is that homes are built with a mind to fire safety, and there's adequate egress in case of fire, and that the residents exercise preparedness for the eventuality of an emergency situation. The claim made at a recent hearing that there is only one egress route to Park Hill Estates V2 is factually incorrect. Fire danger exists whether or not Park Hill Estates V2 exists or not. The existence of Park Hill Estates V2 will make negligible difference in time of egress. I note, as a UCSB student from 1969 to 1971, I used to drive through Tucker's Grove Park on San Antonio Creek Road on my way to and from school each day when the road through the park was a public road. In fact, I thought that route was the primary way to get home on Via Orquita. Certainly, the road through Tucker's Grove should, could, and must be used for effective emergency egress. The same logic holds true for the furor being made of the native grasslands. Is not the mitigation plan with UCSB a plan that the folks at the Cheeto Center are very agreeable to mean anything to anyone? Why won't the adjoining property owners acknowledge the benefits of the mitigation plan put forth in the MND as being a very excellent idea for Galita and UCSB? Let's consider the issue of density. If someone listened to the neighbors' talks of density of Park Hill Estates V2, you'd think that the designers of the project were planning a multi-story, high-density project that would blot out their views and create constant noise and ruin their quality of life. But is that the case with this project? To the exact contrary. This is another fact that the residents seem to willfully disregard and gloss over, repeating the same mantra that Park Hill Estates V2 will be a bland PUD or a row of boxes. It will not be. Taken altogether, what this all means is that the objections of the current residents, while originally all legitimate concerns, have veered off into wild exaggerations. All of these legitimate concerns have been squarely addressed at the price of much time, labor, and expense in the MND. It is obvious to me that they have come to view this land as their park or open space, and they loathe to give up this perk, a perk which they have enjoyed for years at my father's expense. Their open space is, in fact, privately owned, properties owned for the type of development that is currently being proposed and conforms to the long-range plan for the eastern Galita Valley. The planning staff very clearly recommends approval after extensive project review on their part, and Board of Architectural Review will occur for everything done on the site. In closing, my father Lou Zelik did not invest in this land, so it would become a perpetual parkland for adjoining property owners. In his foresight, he saw back in 1968 that this land would someday be part of the inbuilt eastern Galita Valley. To further delay this project, with numerous continuances, is to run contrary to the objectives of the eastern Galita Valley Plan, which my father anticipated by some 16 years, and to the county's findings and recommendations as delineated in the MND, respectively."
Thank you, Jason. Mary Vickers. Danny Vickers is next, and I have John Nielsen after that.
Thank you, Commissioners. I live at 4680 Pennell Road, which abuts the open space, and I would like to first state that the neighborhood does not use this land as a park. You rarely see anyone out there. It's not conducive for children to play. It's not a place that people walk through. It's, you know, it's full of stickers and holes, and it's not a place that the neighborhood uses for recreation, just to clear that up. My main concern has been what other people have talked about, the 12 lots that were previously said were all that were available to be built on this site. And my question was, what has changed? Now, you've talked about certain things that maybe that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if anything has changed or not, that it's just your determination to make that change. I would ask that you maintain the one-acre parcel feel for that neighborhood. Most properties are one acre. They do have the ability to have horses. We do have a rural feeling neighborhood, and I would ask that you keep that in mind when you're allowing this new development to be built. We don't want something to be dropped in there that is not going to be in keeping with the feel of our neighborhood. We understand that this property has to be developed. We're not fighting that. What we're fighting is, please keep our neighborhood consistent. Don't drop something in there that is not zoned the same way the rest of our properties are zoned. And please keep in mind that this is a rural feeling neighborhood, and that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting, by the way. Danny.
My name is Danny Vickers. Unfortunately, I'm the president of the San Antonio Creek Homeowners Association. In '07, I wasn't, but now I am, so a lot of the leadership people look to me for it. I'm going to skip over, I've got two pages here, Commissioner Cooney, but I'm going to skip over the first page because so much of this stuff's been talked about, and I'd like to zero in, you know, this is thousands of pages of information, but I'd like to zero in, try to summarize the essence of the neighborhood perspective. You know, you've heard about fire safety. I'm not going to veer too much into that, all that stuff. But I just like, the homeowners that are talking to me, we had to go out and hire an attorney, and we had to go out and hire an environmental consultant. We had to. We didn't in '07. We didn't want to in this, in this go-around. We were hoping that the process would work, and we just felt like the process didn't work, so we had to go hire representation. And it really boils down to, if you want to get into the legal arguments, as I understand it, and we've got 20 pages of testimony from our attorney that's already outlined the legal arguments, but I'm just going to summarize from a lay perspective what those arguments are. Mr. Nelson is basically arguing the bonus density law. I've read it. Alex has provided it to me. I've talked to Ann Alme about it at length. I've also read Mr. Glenn Russell's letter, which says that the bonus density law does not exempt you from SEQA. You still have to comply with SEQA. So I don't want us to lose sight of that fact. And I know you've got counsel sitting here at the table, and if she disagrees with that, I'd like to know that because we've asked to speak to county council through this process, because I wanted to hear directly from the legal department that the bonus density law would allow you to ignore SEQA. But I don't think that's the case, and our attorney certainly testified to that fact. SEQA requires that a fair argument can be made, a fair argument, that at least there's one significant, the potential for one significant environmental impact, just one. If you can find a fair argument for one significant impact, then you've got to require an EIR. It's just as simple as that. I've been asking, I've been asking for that. I've been asking, why aren't you doing an EIR? I've hired, I paid an attorney $20,000 to answer that question for me and do the legal research. And as far as the neighborhood's concerned, and the neighbors that I represent, they're asking me that question. Why are we not, why are we not requiring a more rigorous environmental review? So that's, and there's really five points I'd like to make on that. So all we have to do is argue, unless the county council disagrees, all we have to do is make a fair argument that there is a potential, one significant impact. Well, if you could just go look at Mr. Glenn Russell's letter of October the 18th of 2011 to Mr. Jeff Nelson, I'll quote, and I've got the letter in my briefcase, "Park Hills Estate Version 2 appears to constitute a substantial change from Park Hills Version 1." That's in your packet. This is Mr. Glenn Russell, the head of Planning and Development. "In respect to resource constraints and density, the native glass, grassland resources protected in this county through the land use policy have grown considerably since assessment." And approval, and approval of the, of the Park Hills 1, the density has also increased, and as you heard Mr. Jim Westby say, 33%. In his letter, he quoted 50%, but it was actually 33%.
Mr. Vickers, let's get an understanding about the time here.
Okay.
Three minutes is up, so how much do you have in mind?
Just a few more minutes.
Well, give me a number.
Can you give me three?
All right.
Okay. Point number two is the county ruled in '07, you've heard, you ruled that it would only support 12 residential units. You made an environmental finding that it would only support 12, and there was a specific reason for that, because I've talked to the planner who proposed that. That alone should trigger an EIR. Is that not reason for an EIR? You found that only 12 homes would support that site? The third thing is onsite mitigation. And again, we've hired an attorney. We had to hire an attorney to figure this out. Onsite mitigation is preferred under SEQA, and it's also preferred under your county, under your county guidelines. And so now we're doing off-site, off-site mitigation, when in '07, onsite mitigation was feasible. In 2011, it's not feasible, and the public would just like to know why there's been a change there. The fourth reason is David Magny. I mean, he presented all his stuff. I won't review any of that stuff. The fifth reason is all the environment, all the fire safety stuff. I know it's been tried to be portrayed by the applicant, that the neighbors are just worried about their nimby's, and they're trying to protect their views. There's a lot of neighbors that don't live contiguous to this that are legitimately concerned about fire safety. I would think that is a potential concern, that a fair argument can be made that we need a further environmental review in this process. So those are five reasons, I think, that present a fair argument. I just want to communicate those from the neighborhood's perspective. The other thing is, if this plan is approved as written, I believe it brings into serious question the county's credibility on this and the integrity of the process, because in '07, you ruled one way, and I realize that this is a different, this is a different plan, but the environment hasn't changed. It's basically, if anything, it's increased. And there are birds of prey on that, on that site, a lot of them. And if you do off-site mitigation, under SEQA, we believe you have to take a closer look at it. It's very unfortunate we're in this position right now, to put the planning commission in this position. I'm a business guy. I like to work things out between the applicant, the staff, get to the planning commission, and be a little closer together than we are here today. Unfortunately, we're not there. I would just ask, on behalf of the association, that you either require additional environmental review and some meaningful discussion. I know Mr. Nelson will point out that he's had a lot of meetings with us, and I agree, he has. He's had a lot of meetings with us. But I can tell you, after the first few meetings, neighbors stopped coming. They stopped coming because they kept hearing, I have the legal right to do this. I'm here, basically, I'm here to listen to you, but there's a lot of things that are not negotiable, and that was a mistake. I think everything's negotiable. I think you have to continue to talk, and I would encourage Mr. Glenn Russell, the head of Planning and Development, to get involved in this, because if you rule against the neighborhood on this, we're going to be extremely disappointed, as you, as you can imagine, and as you've heard. We're not against development. We're not. From my standpoint, the '07 plan and the 2011 plan won't impact my property. The views are going to be the same. I'm going to lose the same views from '07 as I'm, for the most part, in 2011. There may be a little bit of difference. I don't know. But from my own personal view, it's not going to affect me. I'm here to say, from the neighborhood perspective, because that's who I'm representing, fire safety's a big issue. It's a big issue. We've evacuated twice in the last four years, and this MND is basing its findings, its fire evacuation findings, on a 20-year-old EIR for the Galita Community Plant. That's basically where we are. And what we're saying is, you need to revisit that. There's ways to improve this neighborhood without killing this project, without killing this project, but we've got to have cooperation from the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have John Nielsen next, and Regina Majid is our final speaker for whom I have a slip. Mr. Nielsen.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, my wife, Robert, and I live on Via Orquita. In 2007, the San Antonio Creek community approved a plan to build 12 houses on the property owned by Lou and Charlotte Zelik and others. Now, five years later, a plan to build 16 larger homes with different grading is being considered. From my perspective, this plan and the county's interest in it is about money, increasing the tax base, and ignoring the wishes of those that live in the neighborhood. We are not against development of the property. Your decision will affect the daily lives of all of us that are speaking to you today. As current residents of the neighborhood, we have a right to reasonably ask that the 2007 plan be adopted, or at least ask no more than 12 homes be built. The view from our property will not be affected by this development. The issue is about neighborhood density and safety. We live in a high-fire hazard area with limited evacuation routes. With both the Painted Cave Fire and the Hesocita Fire, the fire came downhill, making the exit to Highway 154 an unlikely evacuation route. That leaves Via Los Santos and San Antonio Creek through Tucker's Grove. The Tucker's Grove exit needs to be improved. The asphalt is crumbling in places. The road is 15 feet wide in spots. I measured this morning with a tape measure. The downhill edge of the roadbed looks unstable in places. The gate to Tucker's Grove is locked at sunset, and the county has tied two links of the chain together with cable ties so the vehicle can drive through by pushing on pads welded to the gate. I appreciate the effort by the county. However, the existence of a chain with a weak link is not widely known in the neighborhood. A safer barrier would be one-way, a safer exit barrier would be one-way spikes embedded in the road surface, allowing an easy exit and no entrance. If more than 12 homes are built, I want the improvement of San Antonio Creek Road and an improved exit gate at Tucker's Grove, a condition of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Regina?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Regina Majid, and I live at 1145 San Antonio Creek Road, and I'm also a neighborhood safety representative. During the last few days, I received a lot of calls and emails from my neighbors apologizing that they will not be able to be today for reasons that either they are ill or... that they will not be able to be today for reasons that either they are ill, or disabled, or unable to be excused from work. But they wanted me to pass on to you that they, if they could possibly be there, they would be here and they would speak. They asked me to say a few words on their behalf, so I will. Most of our neighbors, including my family and myself, are very concerned about several issues regarding their current PHE development, but the most important are three. It's fire, safety concern, traffic, and environmental issues. As you know, in 2007, the county planning commission approved PHE, PHE plan to build 12 homes. Everybody agreed to it. And in review of 2007, as you already know, and I'll repeat again, concluded the subject site will only support 12 homes, and that onsite mitigation of native grassland is needed to be done to protect for aging areas for birds of prey. I'm sorry to repeat that, but I feel that it's needed to be repeated again and again and again. It is so important. In 2010, new developer Mr. Nelson entered the picture, and during the very first meeting with our neighbors, Mr. Applicant declared that the reason he wants to build more than 12 homes is current economy and his own financial reasons. I was there at that meeting along with many who are here, who were here today, and who were here on December 5th, and I can attest that that is true. Mr. Applicant let us know upfront that he's doing a favor to the neighborhood, meeting with us. And he made us very clear from the very beginning that regardless, we like it or not, he will proceed with the project because he has legal right. That's why so many neighbors did not attend his future proposed meetings. Danny and I and a few others did, because we were still hopeful that the balance will be reached, but it was not. Furthermore, in the letter to the county dated December 5th, 2010, on page eight, in his own legal verbiage, Mr. Applicant threatens the county to pursue his legal rights if his plan is not approved. On December 5th of last year, during the first half of the hearing, Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Applicant made presentations that San Antonio Creek Road neighborhood has adequate emergency roads for the fire evacuations, naming one Tucker's Grove Park. Why I'm repeating this? Yes, it was said many times today, but it was also said prior, prior December 5th, 2011. Nevertheless, Mr. Applicant and Mr. Tuttle said, no, this is all fine. This is a great exit. So we now think, do you commissioners listen to us? Do planning department listen to us, or just ignore us? As a neighborhood safety representative, with help of steering committee, have done many investigations regarding Tucker's Grove Park exit, and it is totally inadequate. It is a trap during evacuations. And I would invite all of you, if you don't believe us, go and experience that. Also, there is no exit through La Riata Road, like somebody mentioned during the December 5th of last year meeting. There is no exit through La Riata and Villa Regina. That, that road is closed at the end. So if the next wire comes again from 154 highway side, just like it was during Hesocita Fire, we all, and that's approximately 450 cars, will have to evacuate through one side, and that's North San Marcos, North San Marcos Road, towards the north. So that's, we have two, about the numbers, we have 223 homes right now. That math is, I'll hold. We have 223 residences right now. In addition to that, we have 47 vacant lots already approved by the county to be built. And as soon as economy improves, and lending institutions will start lending money, those lots will be developed. The math is 223 plus 47, or approximately 47, plus 16 homes that we are discussing today, that sums to 286 residences. Majority of us have three cars. That's an average per household, because we have kids, we have grandkids, we have pets. That, 286 times three, just for the everyday traffic, is 858 cars. If we are too pressed to evacuate, I assume every family would try to get two cars. Why? Again-
Ms. Majid, I think we've got the point, and your time is up, and we know-
I requested more time.
I know, you've had more time. We're up at, at six minutes, but everything you're saying, other than the numbers, is something we've heard repeated many times. So-
Okay.
I'll give you another minute to wrap up.
Okay.
You pick what things you want to say.
Okay. So that's 286 times two, it's 580 cars that we are talking for evacuation. Therefore, until we have adequate emergency roads, we as a neighborhood cannot agree to such a high number of additional cars, as it will result in endangering our lives. To finalize my presentation, I would like to say that our neighborhood has done a lot of research, consulted many necessary professionals, and we learned about our rights as well. And we are prepared, prepared to stand for them if needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the speaker steps I have.
Commissioner, we did give a DVD to David at the beginning of the meeting, Katie Mast, yes. It's a three-minute presentation from one of the neighbors. And it is different than what we talked about. I've listened to it. That's all I-
Well, normally, this is, is not the way we receive our testimony remotely. This, this, you're saying, why don't you approach the podium here? Let me ask you a question about it. You've offered CD, or is it a DVD?
It's a DVD.
Okay. From-
From Katie Mast, a neighbor.
Yeah, where's her residence?
She lives on Villa Los Santos, and she's a teacher, so she couldn't be here today.
Okay.
And she, she's going to talk about the, the wildlife that's on the site, which is different than what a lot of people have been talking about. A lot of people have been talking fire safety.
We'll give her three minutes. If it goes over, we'll stop it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gray Ingersoll, I live at 4920 Villa Los Santos, and I can't be there today because I have school. I don't think that the project should be extended from 12 homes, because I know from personal experience in both the Hesocita and T-Fire evacuations, how hectic it can be with densely populated areas and the hectic nature that you get from people trying to evacuate, people trying to evacuate. For instance, during the Hesocita Fire, when we were trying to get out of our driveway onto Villa Los Santos, we couldn't even make a right turn because of the constant stream of cars that were coming out of the area and trying to, to leave. It's, it's, it's a serious danger, and I'm sure that other people had to deal with this too. So if we were to add even more people, it would be even worse naturally. So I don't think the program should be extended. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Mast. I'm a renter now at 4920 Villa Los Santos. I can't be with you today because I have a job working at an elementary school, but I want to make a point for the planners. I live in this area now as a renter, not a homeowner. I have nothing at stake in terms of trying to protect my property values, but I care very deeply about the environment. And I'm lucky enough to walk up to the 14.5 acres that is being slated for development, and I see birds of prey there constantly. A big blue heron, owls, falcons, and red-tailed hawks. Those birds need to have open space in which to forage on. The 2007 plan allowed them that open space, limiting the project to 12 homes. This new plan does not. Not only does it not leave open space, the complete grading is going to obliterate everything there, even the top soil. So with the loss of the open land, which is so precious, what I see is that we're allowing a developer to pencil in the profit he needs with 18 homes. But let me show you firsthand what happens with profits and money. It's probably one of the biggest lessons I learned after losing everything in the T-Fire. This is what happens to money in the end. This is where money is going. Ashes and dust. This is my son's piggy bank. He had it since he was a tiny child, and there were hundreds and hundreds of dollars in here saving, in savings for him, in gifts for him. It went in an instant. It's gone. But our environment, the animals that we share this land with, our safety when we need to be able to evacuate this area ourself, which has not only residents, but four houses of worship, and they're burgeoning parking lots. All of that is much more precious than money. Thank you for your time, and I hope you make the decision to limit this project to 12
All right. I think now I can say this limit, this ends the public comment portion, but I do want to allow Mr. Nelson to make any responsive comments before we return to staff.
Yes, thank you, Members of the Commission and Chair Cooney. Let me hit a couple of things that have been hit along the way. First, as to fire and roads. No one cares more about the safety of the residents there and the greater area than, than we do. We, like everyone else here, have evacuated as fires have happened over the last 35 years, and that's part of everyone's shared experience in Santa Barbara. The site itself will be safer, built out with fire-safe homes, with new hydrants that no one has mentioned. There will be new hydrants added to the area that are part of the safety mechanism for the area. That'll be safer than the existing grasses that exist. The road grid is the county's issue. It's not the Zeliks' issue or the Coens' problem in doing it. The Zeliks and Coens bought this property in 1968, and several years later, the county decided to close down Tucker's Grove, which Steve Zelik had testified was his main route in and out. It was a two-way road, and it was, it was adequate for two ways, and it's, it's, the last property standing should not be held to be responsible for the county's actions on what they've done with the road grid. And many times, they've closed off roads in response to people's issues, and then it should, it comes back to haunt them, and it should not be an individual property's responsibility for that. There are road fees from this project that indeed could be used to widen that road if, if the collectively fire roads and parks said, yeah, let's widen that so it's a more passable road. But it's not, it's not necessary for this project, and it's, its presence or absence is totally the county's doing and not the Zeliks' or Coens' doings. In 2007, you said there is, this issue needs attention generally from the county, but there's no nexus for the Park Hill project. As to biology and grasslands, grasslands in the backyards fenced so that people cannot occupy them is not sustainable relationship in a neighborhood, and that's what the 2007 plan said. Six acres now is, would totally dominate the site in people's backyards. It's completely untenable to do six acres of grasslands onsite. We first went to a site that was to the, to the east of this, the county park's land that they acquired in the Preserve at San Marcos, and said, do you want grasslands planted there? And they said, no, parks turned us down. So at this point, it's, okay, you can plant them in the people's backyards, but we will not plant them in a nature preserve, because parks doesn't want you to do it. So we go to UCSB, and within the hour, they jump on and say, fantastic, we want it here. We want it here. It's exactly, it fits in exactly with what we're planning to do on the Coal Oil Point Preserve and the West Campus Development of, Nature Development. And you had testimony from Lisa Stratton that, in fact, that would be preserved long-term and address some of the questions here, and it would all be done per a plan that the county reviews and approves. And in fact, they, they were so enthused about it, they, they came out and got some of the grasslands from Park Hill and planted it already, and she testified, they're doing, they're doing great there. And in truth, we could take all of the grasslands right now without a county permit and take it out to UCSB, because there's no, there's no protection on that. And so anyway, we're doing the right thing, I think, from a grass mitigation standpoint. Indeed, the basin, the detention basin does have native grasses. It has purple needle grass in David Black's plan. It has a variety of different natives, and if it's to be fine-tuned to be more grasses rather than general natives, that's okay. But these people are, the owners are going to own this property long-term, and it's not reasonable that they not be able to bring their kids down there when it's dry. That's something we fought for all along. Let the owners of this property actually use it when it's usable. So as to what's the baseline for expected use of this property, I sent a, I sent a court case before, is that when you have environmental review, you're tearing off both the environmental review for the community plan, which anticipated development of this site, but also the 2007 approval and negative declaration, so that there's a baseline expected use of this property that tears off of both of those, and so does the environmental review. So what is that expected baseline of use? In 2007, was it indeed 12 homes plus 12 second units, which various neighbors testified for certain would be, would be the outcome, which is, that's 24 homes. And all of that can happen with no more regulatory hearings. That could happen if, if this does not go forward. You could have 12 homes and 12 second units with no hearings whatsoever. What does the general plan and housing element anticipate? Well, the general plan includes the housing element, where you have an inclusionary requirement, where you have to provide affordable, either through inclusionary units or bonus density units. So under that, those two combined, the baseline is 18 expected houses, because you're entitled to a bonus density of 18 homes. So that's what we had originally. We have dropped it down to 16 homes. So you've got, and, and the environmental view from the housing element said, all of those extra units that you're going to have because of a bonus density or affordable housing are anticipated, are not an impact, and are considered a part of the community plan. And so you have both the underlying zoning, which would allow 14 units, plus you have the overlay of the housing element, which has had environmental review and says that you would, you would anticipate those extra units. So the reality is, the world is different than in 2007. The real estate world is profoundly different. In-lug fees for this project have gone from $784,000, if they had recorded the MACPAP then, to $1.2 million, which is just an untenable amount. The grasslands are something that you don't want to go out into the marketplace and say, trust me, owners, you cannot occupy this part of your backyard because it's grasslands. Please buy this. And they're looking at other properties, and they say, no, I'm not going to buy these. Why should I have land that I can't use? So there are basic conditions out of the 2007 plan that we said were untenable, and we told the Zeliks and Coens, hey, if, we're willing to take this on, but we have to get the things changed to make this workable. So if you go out in the marketplace, people can say, I understand what I've got, and I like what I've got, and I'll buy these homes. So two final, just general comments is, if a laborious staff review has no, has any meaning, we should get approved, and you should adopt the mitigated ND. If, if this laborious two years of process and 350 hours of review doesn't mean anything, then you've got to change the process, because we've done everything, we've done everything right, we've responded to every department, and we're here before you with, I think, an outstanding plan, a better plan than 2007. One final comment is, I've been, unfortunately, as- One final comment is, I've been, unfortunately, as evidenced by my age, around here a long time, so I've seen projects from beginning to processing to development to being a part of the neighborhoods, and then a mature part of the neighborhood where it's been there for many years. And the developer's always a bad guy here, and I accept that role here, although we've worked with people on projects years and years and years. And the reality is that I'm just carrying the baton that was first carried by Lou Zellick for 35 years, and ultimately, the baton is going to get handed to homeowners, and there's going to be homeowners here. So it's about the future homeowners, homes that work in a community, and homes that are a successful and appropriate addition to the neighborhood. Back when the Zellicks and my family moved here in the 60s, there was, when new people came to town, there was a welcome wagon where they would, you would get a basket of goodies from people saying, thank you for coming to our community, and we appreciate you coming. And the days of welcome wagon are over for new development. But the reality is, statistically, there's, if there are 15 homes, statistically, five of those will be new people from out of town. If there's 12 homes, there will be four new people from out of town. Or a third of the homes now are sold to people from out of town. Two-thirds would be local buyers, buyers who even know these neighbors already. When we, when we've had projects mature and then exist for some period of time, like Vintage Ranch, the owners say, this is a marvelous project. You're telling me that the neighbors fought this tooth and nail so that I couldn't have, me, I couldn't have this home, this really nice home? I said, yes, tooth and nail, 10 years. And the reality is, when these are built, when nice new homes are built, they become a part of a fabric of the community, and this will too. This is, this will be the most walkable part of the neighborhood. Everyone's going to walk through this. It's going to be a beautiful addition to this neighborhood. So we're not embarrassed at all about what we're presenting, or presenting something that's tricks of zoning or anything. We think we have a fantastic plan that will be a wonderful place for people to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, Commissioners, let's see if, if you, if staff have any comments first, then we can ask any questions before we decide what to do. Mr. Tuttle, anything to add at this point?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, nothing at this point, just available for questions.
Okay. Anybody else, County Council?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just had a few things that I thought would be helpful to clarify for your commission before you start your discussion phase. The first is, I just want to clarify that the project and the county as a whole, we apply all applicable laws, and all of the laws apply to this project, including the subdivision map act and state density bonus law, as well as SEQA. And we need to be in compliance with all of those laws as far as moving forward the project. And the other thing I wanted to clarify was the standard of review for a negative declaration. We've heard some statements about a fair argument being made, and I want to just clarify that the standard is that if there's substantial evidence to support a fair argument, that a significant impact in the environment will occur, and that's what triggers the preparation of an environmental impact report. So it's not, it's not just a fair argument, it's substantial evidence to support a fair argument. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question about that, but go on to other questions if that's all right.
Sure.
Would you? There's, on page five of the staff report on Pennell Road, there's an agreement that hasn't been carried out concerning the right-of-way and about the privacy of a portion of the road. Could we get some staff response to that, or perhaps the applicant would respond to it? Page five, the second paragraph, Pennell Road.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, Pennell Road is the private road running along the north side of the property, the north end of the property. And there is, Pennell Road is actually made up of essentially two parcels. It's what's referred to on the site plan as Lot 18, which is approximately 25-foot-wide strip of land. And then in between Lot 18 and the rest of the project site, there's this five-foot strip of land. And that five-foot strip is actually owned by the Jete family, which owns this five-acre piece of property towards, to the west. In 2007, there was an agreement between the Jetes and the developer at the time regarding this, that the five-foot strip would be exchanged to the Park Hill property in exchange for the Lot 18 being quick claimed. That 2007 agreement, as with the 2007 plan, approved plan, was never acted upon. Today, before you, there is no formal agreement on that five-foot strip of land. However, it's not required to address that issue as part of this project. The site can, and the subdivision can move forward without resolving the ownership issue with that five-foot strip of land. So it's not something that we need to address today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That answered my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia, I wanted to, if I can hold off just one minute, Commissioner Brooks, I wanted to have you state if it's true that during your absence, and I know you weren't here on the 5th when we had the first hearing on this matter, but that you have in some way reviewed the proceedings and therefore are in a position to participate with us today.
Mr. Chair, I was in a hospital bed, forcing my teammate to watch this proceeding on TV, and I saw, I think it was Mr. Vickers, I'm not sure if I recognize, I remember seeing a gentleman with white hair, and I remember many of the people that were in the audience, but I did watch it on TV, just, I was in bed, and I said, oh, I remember that guy, I remember that guy. The guy was probably saying, hey, keep quiet, let me hear their testimony. But I watched it on TV from my hospital bed.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cooney. I guess I'm going to address my question to County Council. And I just need to make sure that I understand the state density bonus program. Okay, we have heard that the fees right now, the in-lu fees, you know, are X amount of dollars. And it is the right, you know, of the applicant and the developer to follow the state density bonus with a very affordable, a very low affordable rental unit, and that's what they're putting in here. I'm just looking at the project description, the issues on page four, and then I look over at the conditions, I guess it's condition 43. My question is, when I did my site visit today, I guess that's the closest look I had gotten at this particular community. I am looking at homes, you know, I'm going to say maybe some of the multimillion-dollar homes. Is there any interpretation of the state density bonus regulation or law or requirement that talks about having very low affordable homes, you know, under the state density in areas where families who are, you know, very low and who qualify, you know, for these rentals, you know, where they would have appropriate services that sometimes are needed by families, you know, who are far below the, you know, the average, what would, you know, if they qualify, you know, for this particular rental unit? Because it seems to me, you know, I come from a background of teaching in a public schools, you know, there are certain, you know, in-lu fees can go to developments, and then they have support services that go around. And I just, this is the second or third project that I've had before me, you know, with the state density bonus law. And I just, you know, does the state, you know, approve of this type of use of this law? Or have there been any decisions made that were, you know, that these types of units really should be in places where closer to the services that might be needed?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, state density bonus law, I mean, we look to the government code, it's 65915, and it really, it does not address specifically where a unit would be located in connection to the remainder of the services in the community. The way that the section is organized, it gives the applicant options. If you provide a certain percentage of affordable housing, then you receive a certain percentage of density bonus on your project, and as well as an incentive or concession. And it really depends on whether you choose, what income level you choose, and then what percentage you provide. So with a very low income unit, you can provide a smaller percentage than, so it, there are advantages and disadvantages, but it's really a formula, and it's laid out on a table, and you just look to what's being provided and then what would be received under the law. Right, and it is, and Mr. Tuttle is reminding me to add that it's up to the applicant to decide. So when you just look to the chart, you see what's being provided, and then you look to see what the percentage of density bonus, and then how many incentives are, that they qualify for.
So the applicant could have chosen a greater number, greater being another one perhaps, affordable unit, if he had chosen to do that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's correct. You can choose, you know, a percentage of very low and get a density bonus. You can choose a higher percentage of low or moderate. So you can choose what level and what percentage, and then that dictates what your density bonus is and how many incentives that you qualify for.
And would it have made a difference with the small number of units, I mean, the base number of units, in terms of that formula? I just wonder, just because the neighbors have said, you know, well, it's too dense, and we don't want it there, and it's, you know, this is really the applicant's choice under the law. So he could have actually provide, had more units there than what he's actually providing in terms of the affordable units. Okay, you don't need to go, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's correct. I mean, it's based on the percentage of total units. So you have your base number of units, and then depending on what percent you make affordable, you get the bonus and the incentives.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have some further questions, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like Mr. Tuttle to go over the issues with Lot 10, and to provide a couple of informations about the, I guess it's the issue of the sewer really that drives the finished grade for that lot. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there's kind of two issues that drive the pad elevation for that lot. One is that the engineering design for this site to address drainage is based on directing all the new, all the runoff from the homes to the central detention basin. And so it's been contoured and proposed to be graded to accommodate that, which is why all the pads are situated the way they are, so that runoff would go to the roads and then from the roads to the basin. The other would be the sewer, and to provide for gravity flow of the sewer lines. Now, we've heard from, in the past, from flood control, in discussions with them, that their requirement is that there, as long as there's no increase in runoff in any direction, that you can continue to essentially have runoff at the same quantities as the existing condition. And you saw in the presentation from the applicant that there is a certain amount of runoff going towards the west already. That same amount could continue to go in that direction. So from a drainage perspective, there's not the requirement or the necessity to direct runoff towards the road. So it really is, from a sewer line perspective, in talking with environmental health staff who review water and sewer service for projects, they, it's their recommendation to avoid any private pumping instances and the creation of lots that would necessitate that. They spoke to the fact that the current update to the Gleda, Eastern Gleda Community Plan actually has policy to require that. But they did say that there's no current law that requires pumping, so if your commission or decision-makers chose to approve a project that did require pumping, that's something that could be accommodated. We obviously would need to confirm with Gleda Sanitary that they would accept it, but their, Gleda Sanitary's response is they won't take any maintenance responsibility for private pumping, but, so it would be the responsibility of the homeowner, but it is something that could be accommodated.
Okay. The other issue, well, a couple other issues. And, you know, I hate to, you know, fire safety is obviously such a huge concern in this area and throughout the Eastern Gleda Valley, well, throughout the whole Gleda Valley, Valley and the foothills. And in speaking to Captain Pepin this afternoon, you know, my question to him was, well, why did we, why did the county allow all these homes to be built on these hillsides? We know it's a high-fire hazard area over the time, 40 years, I don't know how long we've been building up there, 50, 40, 30, it's quite a while. And Captain Pepin said, well, the fire department standards are, we only need two access points. Well, that's, it seems very difficult for me to believe considering this particular area, but we have those access points. Now, that doesn't mean that it's right, but it's unfortunate that planners 50 years ago couldn't have looked at this area and said, gee, we need more access points, more access points, in order to facilitate development in this area. But I think that Ms. Majid indicated that, you know, there's X number of lots, 47 lots that are vacant that could be built. We looked at a Castro lot split not too long ago. There's going to be some more homes built. So it's, it is a problem, but it's, it's just such a conundrum that it is, that development is allowed, and it has been allowed. And I think it's, it's all the improvements, it's, that will be of the subdivision, it's certainly fire department's regulations and standards are certainly different now too than they were back 50 years ago. But I don't have an answer for the public. I think that's unfortunate, but I don't, I don't think that we can, there's any regulation that prohibits us from telling this property owner or any property owner, say, well, I'm sorry, you can't build now. I don't, I don't think, County Council, you can confirm that. We can't tell them that they can do that, provided that he's meeting the regulations, he can do that. Is that, that's correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, just to make sure I'm understanding your question. I mean, is your question about your discretion over this particular project?
Well, it's concerning the high, the building in a high-fire hazard area.
Well, since this, this is a map, I mean, it is a discretionary application. So your commission has discretion to determine whether or not the findings can be made for this application. Yes.
Okay, all right. And I'd like to speak, to ask perhaps on the Tucker's Road exit, which really isn't an exit, I think, as Captain Pepin said, it's not really an exit. And I'm not sure why we keep even mentioning it as an exit, because it's a problem, I think, more than an exit. Somebody can get stuck there, and people back up, and I noticed that it's in the NMD, and I just wonder about whether or not that should be retained in there. But it's, it's really not an exit. It's not even an emergency exit, it's kind of a, it's a problem exit. So I guess those are my basic questions, Mr. Chair. And what I would like to get is perhaps, before we deliberate, is I know that Ms. Muny indicated that she had done a memo, and that she was preparing to do some additional work on that memo on the bio resource issue. And I think it'd be important, just because it's fairly complex, and it'd be nice to be able to read David Magni's letter, which we just got today, plus marry that with Ms. Muny's, Melissa Muny's response. I don't know how you feel about that, but I'd like to have the time to do that. I don't know how you feel about that, but I'd like to have the time to do that.
All right, if I understand, Commissioner Brown, you're not prepared to move into deliberations because there's still information out there that you feel...
Well, I think we can, I think we can do some deliberations, maybe that might be useful.
Okay.
And perhaps leave a piece until we get her memo, if that would, if that, maybe this is only my issue, I'm not sure, I'd hear, need to hear from the commission, but I would like to see what, to see that written information, but I'm prepared to do deliberations on the rest.
Okay.
And perhaps you'd like to proceed as well.
Well, I think the applicants made it clear, if not oppressively clear, that the project has been languishing for a long time, lumping the original review in, which resulted in an approval with the process here. I think maybe it would be a good idea to at least flag our current positions on this, and then we can determine what else we might need, if anything at all.
Okay.
So do you want to make any initial remarks, you want to hear from the rest of us?
Well, I, maybe if I could just outline what I think the, that the issues might be. I think it's the compatibility issue with the adjacent neighborhoods with, and of course one can think of the adjacent neighborhood as those lots just surrounding the project, or the, the neighbors have, seem to bring, that the compatibility applies to the entire, entire area from, I don't know, from 154 over to Old San Marcos Road, down to Cathedral Oaks, so I'll let you determine what you, how you think about the compatibility issue, which would be also considering the density issue. It's about Lot 10, and whether or not the increased elevation on that, particularly for the, necessary for, to allow the sewer to connect and to have gravity flow to the Gleeda Sanitary District, that's kind of my issue, too. The off-site mitigation of the grasslands, I mean, we may have to defer that until we get Ms. Mooney's documentation, but it might be worth just a discussion of that, because I think there's some broader issues about, of, you know, whether onsite or offsite, whether there needs to be any modification to the landscaping of the detention basin. I think those are my basic issues, and maybe, maybe there's some other broader issues that people have, that we could add to that list.
Okay, good start.
All right.
Who would like to go next? Commissioner Valencia?
Sure, that'd be fine. Mr. Chair, I always like to be accommodating, if I can, to the, to the commissioner of the area. In this particular case, I'd certainly like to go along with Commissioner Brown, but when I went through and I drove through, I found that a lot of those homes on the Vialo Santos are beautiful homes, some big estate homes, two-story, beautiful palm trees, I went on the insides on the upper, more of the western lots, and there's gorges, there's one house that's so big, I don't know, it's got to be five, six thousand square feet, and on the, on the, on the left-hand side, on the right side, there's another house that's extremely large, and I went back down again, and I just found beautiful, beautiful homes, some down on the lower end are in probably in the three thousand square foot, thirty-five hundred area, but extremely nice, very compatible homes, very nice, very area, I think if you're affluent, that's the place where you want to live. As far as Lot 10, the elevation on there, I agree, there is a problem there, however, the Gleeda Sanitation District seems to have put a limit on there, saying that there can't be a limits, a lift station on there, so they have a problem with that. I don't know how you solve that, other than you just, if you want, if you want to build a house in there, you build it, and you do as, what the sewer district tells you to do. As far as the off-site mitigation to UCSB, I think it's wonderful to have six acres, and to have these young students waiting to be PhDs, working with all this, and trying to develop this grass to a, to a certain level that it might not develop in other areas. The only problem I, I had with the project was, I didn't know if the, the offset there to the Jetty family, concerning the, that little strip of land that hadn't been signed yet, was enough to hold it, but apparently it isn't, it's not enough to hold it back. And then the state density bonus program, I'd had, I did have a little problem with that, but if it's out of our hands, if it's something that we can't, you know, it's dictated by higher authority, to a certain degree, we have to go by what, what they say. Now, I don't understand to what degree the level of challenge between SEQA and the density bonus program. I understand what you said to me, but to comprehend the in-depth of that challenge, you know, it's probably, it's more than a five-minute discussion, it's probably an in-depth review of the project. So the density program, you know, they do have fourteen lots, and it says, if we say, "No, you have to go back to the plan that you had in 2007," well, he says, "Okay, I've got fourteen lots, plus I can put in a second unit in each one of those, and I'll figure it out so that I can have a density," and he'll have, what, twenty-eight, twenty-eight lots, or if he had twelve, he'll have twenty-four. So I suspect that maybe some of these might end up having a second unit on it, I hope not, I hope that they're elegant homes, and, and stay looking nice, rather than second units pushed in on some of them, because they would be on the outer ends, and they might looking into, looking into somebody's neighborhood, and, or somebody else's house, and I had that happen to me, I had houses move in right next to me and put a two-second story, and look right into my living room, and, or my sunroom, and, you know, it's something that you don't like, but it's, if I didn't like it, I could have bought that lot, it was forty thousand dollars, you know, at the time, should have done it, but it didn't do it. Anyway, so, at this time, I don't, I don't really have any, any problems with this project, and anything that I can think that would hold it up, and I'm prepared to go forward with it, except with whatever corrections the staff might have on, on staff documentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Chair Cooney. I guess the list of issues that Commissioner Brown brought forward, I am, you know, I still have, I have problems with some of these. Compatibility issues, I think we've heard, you know, from the neighbors, you know, this was originally one acre lot, certainly when you go up there, especially looking at so much of the new construction, you know, since I painted cave relatively new, you know, much of the landscaping, you know, it's established, but I imagine there's very few hedges that are complete yet, and it's probably going to come, and I, not today, but I think in our first hearing, we did hear some issues about the difference in the proposal with some street parking, whereas, you know, this, you know, this is an area where you regularly don't have street parking, so the roads are narrow, you know, I, I don't see full compatibility, maybe with some of the conditions, you know, we'll get there, you know, if, through more discussion, but if, you know, if we're finished with discussions or deliberations, we're not finished, I know that, but I still don't see full compatibility with this project, you know, with the surrounding neighborhoods, so I'd want to look at that more.
Well, what would you recommend, then, as conditions to ensure compatibility?
Well, probably one thing I would want to see is no street parking, I don't know, you know, what the regulations are in the surrounding area, but what I do like about it, in the access roads to the project have no street parking, I believe, and then it's just a totally different configuration from everything that I see around it, I guess it's, you know, the two cul-de-sacs, you know, will there be street parking on the It just, you know, has a density about it that I didn't see, you know, when I was, you know, driving around the neighborhood today. So, again, that's, that's my issue there. Lot 10, if that can be resolved, you know, with the pump stations, I did ask Ms. Sheldon, you know, what was their feeling, you know, about the 2007 plan, because then they had, you know, three lots behind them, but, you know, according to Ms. Sheldon, she said that, you know, they were not raised, and it would not become an issue, you know, for privacy. I do like the fact, if, if we go ahead with the project to add the, the hedges, you know, you know, add those conditions that were asked for by the Sheldons, I think that'll be very important. What was my other? The onsite, off-site mitigation. I know, you know, by policy, you know, we're supposed to be looking at onsite, again, it's the density that's precluding that, you know, we, you know, we won't have the onsite, we're not, you know, we're not able to have onsite mitigation right now, because of the density. I had asked, and maybe Ms. Mooney, I don't know if you want to respond to this, but I had asked her a question during break, you know, looking at the 2007 plan, now, we know that the grasslands have expanded, so if we, you know, if, if I kind of, let's say, would support what's there already, what would happen as far as mitigation of that? Or, maybe Mr. Tuttle looks like he's ready to answer that question.
Well, you know, with all due respect to our process, I don't want to get into a conversation, I would love it if you listed questions that you had, that you would like to have filled.
Okay, well, that is one of them, okay.
So why don't you finish your list, and then we'll see how to, to address them.
All right, and I guess, you know, the last thing I have on my list here is, you know, the, you know, the use of the, the state density and the INLU, and I know that is the applicant's right to do that, and I just have to see how that works for me.
Okay, well, let me just put my ideas out there, and, and then we'll see where we are. This was our second lengthy hearing on this matter, on the current version of this project, but in the, because I had the opportunity to participate in the initial project review, I do feel like I know the neighborhood, and understand the issues that development of this space presents for the neighbors. Since the first review of this matter, and this commission's approval, and I have to say, at the time of the first hearing, I, I had as my primary concern, the fire safety issues, that is specifically evacuation in the presence of raging firestorm coming down off the mountains. And, you know, when the project came back, it was the first thing I thought about, because there had been two subsequent fires that affected this area. Will there be other fires in the future? I don't think that's even a question, I think it's, it's a matter of when, when there'll be sufficient fire fuel for another fire. We know we're going to have Santa Ana conditions, we have a densely populated area that's very vulnerable, and so I zeroed in on the aspect of the negative declaration that discussed specifically fire protection in the final negative declaration, it starts on page forty-five. And reading that carefully again this past week, I, I do see a reliance for the environmental impact of fire protection and the risk of this development being added to the mix, as relying in part on that emergency access down through Tucker's Grove, and, and most of us, I think, have driven that, or tried to, we've seen photos that I think are relatively accurate as to the really shabby condition of the road, but to me, the most impactful by far is the testimony of our fire captain today, indicating that both he and the fire marshal, who inspected the, the emergency access egress as late as today, had concluded this is not a viable emergency access, and Commissioner Brown, you said that basically, in fact, you thought it should just go out of the MND altogether. My feeling is that, that we don't have that choice, what we do have the choice to do is to determine that there has been a fair argument that this negative declaration is not adequate to support the, the development of the project as presented. So, and there may be other issues also that would require a full environmental impact report, but I'm focusing on the fire safety issue, I, I think we have a conflict, in fact, there's an indication in the negative declaration that the fire department has indicated that this is a viable emergency access. So the problem is, staff has relied on input from the fire department, which conflicts with the testimony we have today. So I, I realize, in spite of a conflict, we're really getting at the core of a decision that, that we have to make, as to whether we have to resolve the conflict in the evidence, or whether, as I believe SEQA requires, we have to simply identify that there is a fair argument, and then have the, the study tell us what the conclusion is. Initially, in the draft MND, there was another emergency access identified, and the testimonies come forth today that, that that access has not developed, and we can't count on that either. And then there's been testimony that, in the case of a wildfire coming either down the mountain or up the mountain, it's likely there would only be one access for the eight-hundred-plus evacuees. This, this troubles my conscience, I don't believe I can approve this project, which I think Mr. Nelson has maximized in terms of its potential development, the lots are smaller now, we've moved the grass off, beautiful homes, no doubt, terrific project in terms of planning, I love the landscaping, all those things, so until there's another fire, I think this is a great project, but I can't let it go forward on the basis of the MND that we have before us. So, Commissioner Brown, what I would propose to do is to determine that we can't today find the MND adequate, and I'm not sure if that constitutes a denial, or merely an appealable action by the commission, which Mr. Nelson and the applicant take, could take to the Board of Supervisors to see if, if they'd reach a different decision. Counsel, have you had a chance to consider that narrow issue?
Mr. Chair, yes, I have, and I'm going to go through a few of the guidelines, but I think that the, the short answer is that your commission has the discretion, under both our local SEQA guidelines and under SEQA, to determine whether or not the negative declaration is adequate, and under the local SEQA guidelines, if you're determined that it's inadequate, then it states that the project shall be referred back to the lead department for appropriate revisions, or preparation of an environmental impact report. And under the Land Use and Development Code, I believe that your commission could determine that, you know, if the majority of you agreed with that, that preparation of an EIR, I mean, that could be your final decision, and it would be, under the Land Use and Development Code, a final action that would be appealable to the Board of Supervisors, and the board would have the discretion, as the review authority, to determine whether or not they agreed with that, and, and they would have the option of, of agreeing, and requiring an environmental impact report, or finding that the negative declaration is adequate, and going forward with the project. is adequate and going forward with the project.
So, with regard to that last point, if the board, um, had the matter on appeal, and determined that the, uh, the negative declaration, the final negative declaration was adequate, um, would they, uh, benefit from any, uh, other deliberation or findings from the commissioner, or would they just start over and be the deciding body for the entire project at that point?
Mr. Chair, that's a good question. I, I believe that the whole project would move forward to them, and that they could make a decision on the entire project if they believed that the negative declaration was adequate. Um, but, that being said, they also have the discretion to refer back if they need additional information from the commission, so that, I think that would be an option as well.
Because I want to make clear, I'm not suggesting denial of the project. I'm suggesting that we don't have a basis for making a decision, uh, on the SEQA record we have in front of us.
And, Mr. Chair, under the Land Use and Development Code, there's multiple types of decisions that are appealable to the board, and one of those is a final decision by the commission to either approve, conditionally approve, or deny the application on the project. So, that's one action that's appealable. And then, there's also a separate section that talks about any other action, decision, determination made by the commission, as authorized by the Development Code, where the commission is the review authority. So, I think that the decision on the environmental document would fall under that third category.
Okay. Um, so, I, I've said what I think on that, um, Commissioner Brown, but I, I certainly defer to you in terms of how you'd like to proceed at this point.
Well, you know, I, I certainly agree, uh, considering the testimony we've had today, um, from, uh, Captain Peppin, that, or, I'm not even sure it was from him, but from one of the neighbors, where there weren't really two access points, because one was closed off, that they really only had one, and if we can't, if we're not considering the Tucker's Road, that, that there's, this is just simply not adequate. The discussion of fire protection is just, I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with it. Uh, it seems like there's particularly, I guess, originally it was thought off about the other access through La Rienda, of course, but that's, that's all changed, and that's different now. But I, you know, all these areas really concern me, that we're allowing increased development, and, um, we, we heard, we heard that through the Eastern Gleeda Valley Community Plan about, uh, emergency procedures and fire, and, you know, they were touched by it too, when the fire jumped over the 101 freeway. So, I guess my question for staff is what, whether it would be a revise, if, if the commission were to say that this was not sufficient environmental review in the MND, and turn it back to staff, how would you proceed? Or it was inadequate, I guess, is the word we need to use.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, according to the county's SEQA guidelines, if your commission determines that the existing environmental document is inadequate, you would be referring it back to our department to either, with the recommendation either to amend the mitigated ND-
Right, right.
And, uh, address the information that came today from Captain Peppin-
Right.
And any other matters you wanted to, us to consider amending, or adding text or revising.
Right.
Or you could, uh, make the, come to the conclusion that you believe an EIR needs to be prepared. Either path, um, would be appropriate under our SEQA guidelines, at your discretion.
Hmm.
I, I was going to ask, uh, as long as we're on that, uh, choice subject, could we, um, simply refer it to staff for your recommendation as to the appropriate level of environmental review, and consider that at a future hearing? Or is it something you think we should take action on? Um, I, I'm having trouble, other than, as Commissioner Brown said, striking out the references to the emergency access alternatives, I'm having trouble understanding how the MND can be improved. What we really need to do is assess, to a greater degree, the impact of this project, uh, on the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, and I also think, Mr. Chair, it's also, with the additional testimony we've heard today of actual conditions, where there's really only one access point, and that's San Marcus Road, so that's not incorporated in here as well.
Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry, I missed the very last piece of that in, in our internal consultation, but, again, the SEQA guidelines, the county SEQA guidelines, um, provide that if you determine the existing document is inadequate, you can refer it back to our department. I think it does imply that you could do so without specifying exactly which path you think is the correct path. I know we would like to have as much direction from your commission as possible.
In that light, Commissioner Brown, uh, simply pointed out that testimony supported the conclusion, uh, that there's really only one access during a wildfire situation. And, uh, so, it seems to me we would need to, and we have some history on this, we need to assess the impact of, um, these new dwelling units, sixteen, I believe, on, uh, old San Marcus Pass Road, for example, where it feeds into Cathedral Oaks. And, uh, alternatively, if the fire is coming uphill through the park and threatens this neighborhood, what is the, uh, impact on, uh, San Marcus Pass, because all those cars have to go someplace? Um, I don't think we have adequate information on that yet. Um, I, I'm uneasy that we have the choice of a mitigated negative declaration under these circumstances. I think we're driven by SEQA, once we determine there's a fair argument that, that, uh, these concerns can't be mitigated toward a complete environmental impact report. And the conclusion the county may have to reach on this project is that, is that there are overriding considerations which would allow the project to go forward, in spite of-
Right.
-the very real threat.
Right.
Anyhow, that, that's all the guidance I, I think I can give today. But, Commissioner Brown?
Well, you know, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think there's been enough testimony, uh, sort of talking about the area, and giving us a picture of the area, and what has happened previously, um, that it just needs to, the, the section needs to be expanded, and I'm not sure, you're right, and I guess it's, is it through an EIR, that if it is such that there's only, whatever the conclusion is, that it, that's, it's that document that would be the preferable document to provide that information, or to provide that analysis or review?
I, I think what I'm talking about is not a full environmental impact report of all the environmental issues-
No, no, just of-
Just of the fire protection issue.
Correct, right.
And, uh, so it would be a narrow, um, environmental impact report, but it would be, uh, it would be in, uh, compliance with the county's SEQA guidelines as to a focused DIR.
Right. And that can be done, a focused DIR on one subject?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, yes. An EIR always is required to focus on the issue areas where there is a potential for significant impacts, impacts that aren't mitigated, and clearly this, you know, as we've been dealing with this project, um, all the way through, the, the fire hazards have been the kind of overarching concern that we've been addressing.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if you'd like me to make that motion, I, is that, would you like to go now, is, or?
I, I think that would, um, conclude our review at this point, and in the interim, certainly, assuming that, uh, the project is going to come back to us, we could have these other issues, uh, Ms. Mooney's memo, et cetera, could all be prepared, and, uh, perhaps there could even be a, a further discussion of the lot 10 solutions and, and how to resolve them. So, yes.
Okay. Then I, uh, then I'd like to propose, uh, a motion that there be a focused EIR on the, uh, fire protection, um, for the project, and that when, um, the project returns, there's some other issues I think outstanding, just, I think it's lot, uh, 10, also, and I think, uh, there's, to see whether or not there's some other solutions, uh, that can be, um, provided for that lot.
The motion is to, um, to refer the matter back to staff for the preparation of a, an environmental impact report on the fire protection issue.
I'll second.
Anything that we need to add to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would just ask, do you mind if we take a short break? I just want to make sure that procedurally, that we're all in line before you adjourn.
Sure.
So, if we could just take ten minutes, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a comment?
Um, let's hear from Commissioner Valencia on the motion.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I've been going back through the 2007 plan, and, uh, they were concerned about opening regarding Tucker's Grove, the gate on Tucker's Grove, it was locked. It would seem to me that that's a good emergency escape route, and it, can't we work on, on that gate on Tucker's Grove to make that, uh, possible way of, uh, getting cars out? I mean, um, possibly the applicant could do something to enhance the road, or whatever, or widen it, or whatever, but have we looked at that fully? Could I, could I get the applicant to answer a question, or would that be out of?
Yeah. I, I think we're past that, for right now.
Past that point, all right.
I don't, I'm not suggesting that your idea is a bad one, though.
That, that's fine. I, I just, uh, I, I just, then I thought Tucker's Grove was a good idea, and I still think it is, and, uh, I don't understand why it wasn't brought forward, but I'm ready to go forward with what, what you have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll take a ten-minute break. We'll come back in twenty-five minutes to, uh, twenty, twenty-three minutes to four, and, uh, and vote on the motion. And, uh, when we left on break, um, we had a motion from Commissioner Brown, and, uh, and that motion was seconded, and we had begun discussion on the motions. So, um, did you have anything to add for us, uh, based on your review?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the, one item that I wanted to clarify procedurally is, I think, based on the current motion that's, uh, before your commission, uh, I think, just for purposes of appeal to the board, I think it would be good to clarify in the motion that the commission's action is not, uh, on the project as a whole, so it's not an, uh, approval, or denial, or any action on the project, rather just a decision on the environmental document. And that way, um, if that decision is appealed to the Board of Supervisors, then, um, their decision could be limited to that issue, and rather than having your commission, um, get, do more deliberations on the whole project, then the board would have the option of sending it back to you to, after the environmental document issue is resolved, sending it back to you for input on the project as a whole. Does that make sense?
It did to me. Any questions on that issue? Ms. Van Mullen has suggested that we limit, if it's your intent, Commissioner Brown, to the, uh, environmental issue.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, um, any revisions to the motion?
Um, yes, there, there actually is. Um, we, um, Ms. Mooney has indicated that she was going to prepare us a memo, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be advisable to, uh, include, um, a bio, a focused EIR on bio, just because of the grassland issue. Um, David Magny brought up some issues that, that may be worthwhile considering, and I think there just needs to be, um, considering that the Gleeda Community Plan does talk about onsite mitigation and some other issues, if that, if we shouldn't have some further information as well in a bio issue, focused EIR. So, uh, it, I'll just add that to the motion, uh, for discussion purposes.
This, this is going to the Board of Supervisors?
No, 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 not necessarily. That's up to the applicant.
Right.
If, you know, we're, we're proposing environmental review through the, uh, preparation of an environmental impact report. Commissioner Brown is suggesting we include, uh, the, um, biology section in that as well. Um, I agree with you that there is a fair argument that's been made, that, uh, substantial evidence, we've certainly heard, and we had from Mr. Magny and, and, uh, Ms. Mooney, um, that, uh, would support, uh, the preparation of, uh, environmental impact report on that issue as well. So, now we have two, uh, two issues. Um, and do we have a second, uh, for that motion, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I had, I will second this, with the addition.
Okay. So, we have a modified motion, um, to include two issues in the environmental, uh, impact report. Um, so, we're back to discussion on the motion. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, that means that we will be making that decision here, right now, whether we will go into that expanded discussion and, and, and project review by the staff. Is that correct?
What we're deciding is the very narrow issue of environmental review, that we, we can't support the mitigated negative declaration, which, um, staff has recommended that we do. So, we're only deciding that, we're not making a decision on the project, either for or against.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, one question. Um, when we look at the, um, the bio section, will it only address, then, what Ms. Mooney is coming back, um, to us with, or, uh, because we were looking, we were discussing grasslands, and then, I mean, there was another issue today about raptors, is that it? And that's fine with me, but I want to make sure that I understand that we're not doing onsite/offsite mitigation.
Mr. Chair-
What exactly, how limit is this going to be?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, my recommendation would be that if we are scoping biology in as a, an issue that needs to be addressed, is potentially significant, we would have the full discussion of biological issues i- in that section.
All right. Uh, anything further, Council?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. And Commissioners, I, I would just add that, um, since the staff, it, it sounds like your commission is looking towards directing more environmental review on two areas, if there are any other issue areas, um, that your commission believes needs more extensive review, uh, I just wanted to recommend that, that this would be the time to, to do that, rather than, um, so that they, it could be all done at once.
I'm, I'm comfortable that these are the really important issues, and I, I think I've heard commissioners say that, but, yeah. So, that would, my motion stands.
No, I totally agree with you. Um, there, these are all, there are other environmental issues that have been raised. There is, uh, we've received evidence on many others, but I don't think they rise to the level, um, that the fire and biology issues do, so I would agree with your conclusion. So, I think we're ready for the question, if there's no more discussion. Mr. Villalobos, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cuni?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. That was the only item on our agenda today, so, uh, we will be meeting next week here again in Santa Barbara. That's the first of February. Thank you all very much.